Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March 2024 monthly meeting. Trustee Frymark is joining us remotely. We do have an in-person quorum here at Village Hall. Welcome, everyone, to Village Hall. We have a special recognition tonight, and then I know you're all gonna stay on and talk about the budget, right? Yep, no, not a single smile on the road.
Mayor Foley.
Here.
Trustee Starbuck.
Here.
Trustee Wood.
Here.
Trustee Bowdy.
Here.
Trustee Frymark.
Yeah.
Hello.
Okay, next item is an opportunity to request a vote to modify and add an agenda item. I would make a motion to add under the Police Department's portion of the agenda, a request from Haldane related to a parade honoring the boys' basketball team. They're on their way to the final four this weekend, so I'd like to be able to discuss that with Larry. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Next, we have a special recognition tonight. I'm gonna come down. And thank you to Legislature for joining us tonight and Deputy Supervisor Bob Flaherty from Town. Um. The yellow piece of paper right here. Oh, I pulled it. There we go. So come on up.
Oh.
So we're recognizing Officer Matt Jackson tonight. He's had a very good year.
Wow.
And the village has had a very good year with him, joined by Officer in Charge Larry Burke. I'm gonna give this to you, and then so that I can see, I'm going to read from a different copy.
Okay.
And you're welcome.
All along.
Yeah, thank you. So. This is a proclamation honoring Matthew J. Jackson, which is the news, sorry, right? On the other side of that. And the proclamation honoring Matthew J. Jackson as Police Officer of the Year for 2023. Whereas Officer Jackson joined the Cold Spring Police Department in August 2021 and immediately set about building strong, trusting relationships with Cold Spring residents, business owners, and our law enforcement partners in mutual aid agencies. And whereas Officer Jackson's capacity to form strong interpersonal ties is a trait that forms the backbone of the villages and the Cold Spring Police Department's commitment to community policing. And whereas Officer Jackson consistently demonstrates strong character, positive worth ethic competence, and I would even say excellence in discharge of his duties, and a calm and steady demeanor. And whereas Officer Jackson fosters a spirit of camaraderie, good humor, and support among his fellow officers, many of whom are with us tonight. And whereas Officer Jackson has taken on a leadership role as a member of the Police Benevolent Association's Executive Board, and in officer training is spearheading the transition to and readiness for a computer-aided dispatch system. And whereas, in his short tenure, this one's gonna blow everybody's mind. In his short tenure with the Cold Spring Police Department, Officer Jackson has engaged in acts of heroism and compassion, including providing assistance to a mother giving birth, locating an adult with dementia who became disoriented and was lost, administering Narcan and other life-saving measures in two separate cases of overdose, restoring a heartbeat after a cardiac arrest, and single-handedly de-escalating a confrontation following a traffic incident, including securing a weapon alone, a weapon drawn by one of the motorists. And whereas, in all of these ways, Officer Jackson has demonstrated a deep commitment to the people of the Village of Cold Spring. Don't cry, it's gonna make you cry. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the community, the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees commends and honors Matthew J. Jackson as the 2023 Police Officer of the Year. In witness whereof, the mayor, the deputy mayor, and trustees have caused this proclamation to be executed, and the seal of the Village of Cold Spring affixed on this 13th day of March 2024.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You don't have to make a speech.
I'm not. Don't get us sick. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Before we, do we wanna snap a quick photograph before we just have to snap a photograph?
Well, if you could take that down for a quick second. All right, quick second. Ready? Off.
What he really looks like.
Got it.
I have a look at that.
How about the family?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I appreciate it.
And hey, thanks for the high five. Oh, and family, let's recognize.
We take photos with them all the time.
How often do you all this for the year?
The mayor, please.
Maybe fun.
Welcome.
Okay.
I'll come out and then I'll go closer. You do it then.
You want me or just family?
Can somebody use my phone?
You can do it.
Got it. Come on.
The clothes are around. You can pick the best one. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I try that? Awesome.
Thank you.
Oh, you got a new hat on. I'm sorry. Another one. There you go.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing that with us, family. Thank you for being here, officer.
So the monthly board meeting normally consists of reviewing reports from our departments, our standing boards, and our municipal partners. We are in our budget season, and tonight is one of the longer discussions we need to have focused on the general fund. And all the reports are available on the village website. And we ask folks to review them there, or if you don't enjoy doing that, you can request a copy from the village clerk. We'll very briefly cover a couple of items extracted from the reports where the town's needs to make some decisions or give guidance, but we'll hold that until after our next. And also sort of come first. We've already recognized Matt. We've gone out of order. And yet, here we are, the fun part, fun part. Now it's just the misery. So a couple of things to note in brief. Roadways and facilities night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
So engineering for stormwater upgrades is proceeding on Fair Street. There are preliminary drawings under review. Bye, bud. I'll work on the high five. So construction drawings have to be prepared, and then the bid process can be undertaken. The earliest estimates for Fair Street repair are late fall, so the parking lot will be out of commission through the summer. We're renting construction fencing for neater and more stable enclosure of the damage area. I wanted to say thank you to the neighbors for your patience. It's just been really awful to look at since July. And I'd say to Haldane, thank you to the spring sports families for understanding and cooperating with the alternate party parking that we're arranging with you. Lastly, Roadways and Facilities Crew Chief Downey extends his heartfelt thanks to the volunteers with Protect the Highlands who cleaned up trash in Dockside Park last month. It's been particularly heavily heavy following multiple storm hits. They produced dozens of bags, five tires, and even one small skiff that had come ashore. We thank them as well as the board. Many hands make light work, and the village functions on volunteerism. And volunteerism builds community. So, especially to organize with John Erickson. One quick update on water and wastewater. As we emerge from the winter months and we continue toward dam repairs, Laura and I are working with Tectonic on that and with the neighboring property owners. On engineering is focusing on the design for the pump house valve repairs that are necessary to transfer water from the new aqueduct connection into the reservoir so that then can be processed through the water treatment plant. And more on that as plans developed, but letting folks know that we are keeping dam, dam work moving forward at the same time. Next, Officer in Charge Burke is with us. The public will see when you look on the website that the monthly report of the Police Department is new and more informative, and Officer Burke is gonna walk us through it.
Evening, everybody. Again, with the new CAD system, there are still some bugs in it, but we just deployed the first month of the new CAD system with the monthly that we were working on for a while. It also came as a suggestion from the Ad-Hoc Committee, and again, I'd like to back down a little bit. I'm an effort finally would have it rolled it out this month. There's gonna be a couple of tweaks going forward with it. It should be a better view of what we do. It's gonna have the traffic stops on it. It's gonna have different jobs that we've gone through for the month. It's gonna be a little bit more self-explanatory, which said just a number that you see. We redacted some of the incidents on it, like the addresses and stuff, and some of the details on it that I felt that should not be on a report. There could be people's personal addresses, personal homes, and I'd rather not have that displayed out on the report and on the website. So basically, it's broken down, and it actually puts it in sequence. So you look at it, starting with the alphabet, you'll see administrative, some administrative issues that we've always had, obviously, done. You'll see all the alarms, which are the burglar alarms, the false alarms, the push-button alarms for people that have the EMS alarm system. You'll see that be broken down to that area. You'll look at the building checks and the animal complaints. Assist emergency agency, EMS, the people that need calls, building searches are most, most of the building searches will be your, your, your checks for dark house checks. It'll also be a building check, might be a welfare check. That could break down into two separate incidences. It could break down into regular building checks, or it can come down to an EMS call if it's deemed an EMS call. Again, assist fire is in there, and it's all broken down. Detail events, which could be funeral escort, any of the, any of the details that are not spelled out that way. As you know, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing, but it's all broken down with disorderlies, and it goes out, and it really, really spells out what we're doing. I'm really, really impressed with the system. Again, the vehicle stops are in there. You'll see whether we wrote a summons or we gave a warning. And I believe for the month, there were thirty vehicle stops, if I'm not mistaken. There was eighteen summoning issues. So there was some warnings given out. It's up to the officer to write that a summons or, or give a warning to whatever infraction was at that time. I'm gonna go over the numbers really quick with that, soon as I get to that page. Again, it's a work in progress. We're gonna clean it up a little bit going forward, but this is the first month, so. We had one arrest for the month of February, and it was an unauthorized vehicle, which was a suspended license, a motor depriving in the village with a suspended license due to the fact that they owe monies to another court, so their license is suspended, and they were pulled over for a infraction such as speeding summons. The license came back suspended, and that's considered an arrest. Basically, they're given a death appearance ticket to report to court at a later date to not actually take it into custody.
Larry, where does that show up?
That shows up on the monthly continued on the back page. It's a similar one to what I've been doing for the last couple of years. I'm gonna change that one a little bit to fit into the ad readout. It should be on the monthly report continues.
This far? Let's do rest.
Should be right at the top.
Oh, okay. I wasn't looking for a header. Okay.
With that, again, when I'm looking at my report here, it was eighteen, eighteen summons issued for the month, and again, there was other warnings that we've given out. Speeding summonses have been up because we are at school zones, and we're making sure the motors are slowing down since we got a report from a resident that they were speeding. Their children were walking to school, and the cars are speeding past the school zones. So we've been really kind of tacking that for the month of February. We had one hundred and forty-one parking summonses issued. Reason that that was a large amount was one of the nights was a snow night. The people did not remove their vehicles from the street, so there was, I believe, in one night, there was, I wanna say, approximately sixty-seven summonses issued for that, and our parking enforcement officer has been working on the weekends when it has not, when the weather has permitted. So the total number we had was one hundred and fifty-nine for the month. Your date was two hundred and nineteen, and the calls were a little bit over a hundred calls for the month, which is up. And that's with the new CAD system. It's actually documenting the proper vehicle stops and everything that is documented anytime that we are dispatched from 911 or from the sheriff's office, or we self-dispatch. Self-dispatch would be if we see something suspicious, we put it down on report, we self-dispatch ourselves to, say, eighty-three Main Street for a suspicious package person or whatever we start that hot. So that goes added to the CAD. It's given a number, so the numbers are going to go up on what we do. So for this old system that we had, it was not, you know, as efficient as this one is, so it shows you what we're really doing out there.
So you weren't able to count all of the things you were doing.
Correct.
Now you'll be, you'll be able to do it.
Again, I wasn't counting the vehicle stops. Like I said, officers, if they gave a warning, it was nowhere in the old system to put down, hey, you know, I stopped five vehicles in the month of February, and I just gave them a warning.
Okay.
Now we have it.
What does canvas mean?
Canvas will be canvas for a suspicious person. If a call comes in from 911 that there is, somebody stated that there was a suspicious person down on Dockside, so we would get dispatched for a canvas. Or if there was a larceny from one of the businesses, a shoplifting, they give the, they give the description to 911, we get involved with canvassing for that person that fits description. So that would be canvas. If you find somebody's lost. What, I lost my two-year-old child walking around. That would be considered a canvas. Also, it could be considered a lost child, so that's kind of like a duel on there.
So you're looking.
Correct.
And I assume that narrative indicates that in the system somewhere there is a description of the incident.
Correct. There was, same like the old reports when we have the incident reports that we fill out. You have the summary report, you have the narrative of the officer, what he did, what, no, if it was corrected or still ongoing, is it a, a crime that's gonna go to the sheriff's office or there's taxes to go look at, which would be like a fraud case? Somebody said my bank was, you know, was missing a thousand dollars because somebody, we'll do the report, we'll do the initial, we'll do a canvas if there is a person canvassed for it, and then we'll pass a report on to BCI for further investigation.
And will you be able to? It looks as if you could provide titles in each category of item eventually, so this, this old format will go away in a summary page?
I'm gonna, yeah, I have to work with that a little bit. I just gotta kind of fit it in with, it's, there's no specific incidents for CADs for traffic stops like that. The way it's spelled out, the way that, the way that we're doing it, I need to tweak it a little bit, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to Sergeant Rossler, who's been working with this, you know, hand in hand on how to get through the, the, the problems that we're having and some certain things that we need to fix.
Yeah, making sure that this capacity comes to us via an interesting, it's a legitimate with the sheriff department. Any questions or comments from the board?
It was a great improvement. Yeah, thank you so much for working on this.
Yep. It's well overdue. I'll be honest with you, the old report, we just kind of do the same old thing, so I'm really, really happy with this.
I'm sorry if you said this before, but just to confirm, one incident can be listed multiple times, right?
It normally isn't, but you could have, if you have a missing, you, we'll do the missing report, and then we'll, we'll put down a canvas also. So in the system, the way it goes now, you'll get it, you'll get it, you'll get additional incident report from the CAD. So just say some, I'm gonna change it a little bit, just say there was a, a lost dog. So it'll come over, and they'll give me, they'll give me a report number, one, two, three, four, five. We have a report number upstairs that I'm still using, and we'll put in that report, and then you may turn around and say, now I'm going to canvas. So the original job would be that, that, that incident, go for a search, and another number may come up as a canvas. It may be all in one, but it may just come up as a canvas at that point. Now, also helping the sheriff's office if they need help. We go outside the village, they'll say, you know, it is the best thing to make. Lane gate, somewhere on Lane Gate, we'll dispatch over there to fast them up to make sure they're safe, and it may come into a canvas also on Addison. So that may come up that way.
Aaron, anything from you or tweets?
Just reiterating, this is great data. I mean, we really appreciate, you know, you're, you're, you're doing a lot of work and putting it all in and reporting it is, is good for the entire village, so thank you.
I would also add that this comes not as a result of, but it does respond to one of the requests of the Ad-Hoc Committee on Community Policing from two thousand, I'm sorry, twenty twenty. So that's a good thing, too. Okay, anything else from you, OIC?
No, I didn't want to discuss the Haldane.
Oh, yeah, the Haldane thing. So the, the games are, the final four games are Friday and Saturday. Haldane is slated to play Friday night late. We're all hoping they continue on Saturday. That game will be late as well. There's a longstanding tradition in the village that games come, play, excuse me, teams coming home from state finals are met with first responders sirens and villagers out in the streets, and it will be the middle of the night. So Haldane has asked to forego, it is Haldane's request, I want to be clear, has asked to forego a middle-of-the-night parade and have a parade on Sunday at noon. I wanted to get your view on it, since we are, I mean, there are shocking numbers of people in, in the village already as the weather warms.
What we can do?
This Sunday.
So whether win or lose Friday night, also, they want a parade, they want something on Sunday.
What day is the last game, and we're hoping it's Saturday. They want to do noon on Sunday.
And of course, it's up in, when it falls, which is a
Right, so they'll get right back.
Get down, so if anybody's leaving early Sunday morning, they want to have it at twelve o'clock to make sure everybody gets back in time, I would think.
Yes, I'm sure.
Okay, because I would have said move it up to ten o'clock on Sunday, but being that it's far away, and they want people to get back that are staying over, because I know people are staying over. Twelve o'clock is a bit of, is a bit of a stretch for us, but we're not in the height of the season. I don't see it being a problem. Most of the time, those parades are done down Main Street within twenty minutes to a half hour, and I think that's long. I have, I have no problem with it.
Just, it's very, it's a very loud process. What time, what, do we know what time church services happen?
Church will be up here. They do eight-thirty, and they do noon. So whoever's going to church, they'll probably already be at church come noon.
Right, but they're gonna be in, in church and hearing nothing but sirens for quite a long time. I'm wondering if we should
Eleven?
Eleven thirty.
Thirty.
Let's get to time. I don't know what will work best.
I would go with eleven. Eleven would, would make more sense.
Okay, so eleven or four one.
There's another service up at the Methodist Church. I can get a little in the car.
But that's, that's above the, they're talking about going from Haldane down Main Street, scooping the loop and back to Haldane. I mean, it'll be loud there, but not as loud as it would be at St. Mary's in the Highlands or, or Lady of Loretto. I don't know what time the Episcopal. Do you happen to know, Bob?
What?
What time the services are at the Episcopal Church?
They have it eleven.
The Methodist, I think the Oral Society.
That's eleven.
That's the one on the left-hand side.
Yeah. Okay.
At ten? So should we give them two options?
I would like stick to one option, so I, so I kind of tighten it up. I don't want it to be just like
Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean that they have hotels tomorrow.
Yeah. If you give two options by tomorrow, yeah, that's fine.
Eleven or, let's, let's see what this tells us.
Buck amongst yourselves.
No one's watching. I didn't think about this until we started the conversation. Sorry. I looked it up earlier, but it didn't occur to me, and so we were
So this opens Sunday at nine-thirty, but that's not helpful.
I think it's very good.
Okay, well, should we give them eleven?
Here, Sunday service at ten. At St. Mary's.
So eleven is the window, then? And if they can't, if they think they can't get everybody back by eleven, one, okay. Thank you for that consultation. Do we need, we don't, we need additional anybody?
No, I'll be in, the regular office will be on duty. I'll be in, and usually the fire companies with them, so they're a lot louder than the police cars, so they'll get out of their way.
Thank you very much. One note from the fire company, when you, now that we've sprung forward, when you sprung forward and fall back, check or change the batteries in your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, please. Okay. So now we will we'll move on to our board business.
I will be outside if you need me. I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, we're good. Just from here, it's, it's board business and budget. You're welcome to come back or, or head on out if you're feeling done for the night. OREC, thank you. Thank you, clerk, for reminding us. We do have the event coordinators here, Lillian Moser, with a proposal from the REC Commission. Community Day is, is being handled differently this year. And with deep gratitude from the Board of Trustees, there is a committee of residents of various inclinations and interests pulling together Community Day, and Lily wants to talk with us about the timing, the date. Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, the members of the Community Day Committee have come up with July 6th for Community Day, with the rain date of being July 7th.
That's the Saturday, right?
Yep.
Particularly best to take it back to July, and it sounds like they're planning, they're planning timing later in the day when they have the hot sun.
Yeah, timing is planning for later in the day with the parade, heading down to the waterfront, having the festivities down at the waterfront, going from the boat club all the way into Dockside Park. We're looking at having many of the non-for-profit organizations heading up of, of the activities down there. The Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Halden Club, Halden Football Association, the four Phillips Town Fire Companies are gonna be participating.
Great. Does anyone have any objection to that, to those dates on the Fourth of July? It sounds like it's the goal to have fireworks if they are donated. Is that part of the reasoning of the schedule? Just hearing. The other thing, it sounds crazy to think about, but it's been great on Labor Day, but we actually do have more crowds on Labor Day than we do at Fourth of July.
Yeah.
As events for fireworks. So I'm open to, I'm open to shifting it back. I'm very happy to have someone else organizing it.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so you'll check in with us for periodic report. Aaron, any objections from you? Right on, do it.
Thank you.
Do we need to vote on it? Okay, I would make a motion to accept the Community Day Committee's proposal to hold Community Day on Saturday, July 6th, and a rain date of July 7th. More details pending the committee's work. So I can, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Aaron said I, I saw him. All right. Now it's board business. Thank you, Lillian. You're welcome to say if you wish, but certainly you're not. You don't need to. To Laura. Sure. You wanna talk us through the Village's greenhouse gas inventory? Last time we reviewed a greenhouse gas inventory, we were different. Great, so today we are looking at, my question that we adopt, the Village's greenhouse gas inventory for government operations. So this is the emissions, the climate emissions that are produced from our, the village buildings, like the ones that are owned by the government, our municipal fleet, our our wastewater processing, our water plant, so it's all of the things that the government does. And we built this based on our own utility data and our own vehicle data. And so that's what this one is. The one that, that we looked at before was for the whole community, every resident, every business, everything that happens within our municipal boundaries, and that was based on kind of large estimates from the region. And the, one of the reasons that we're doing this is that it helps us plan for the ways that we want to, you know, the good clean energy work that we can do to reduce our emissions. It is also the final piece of our application for Bronze Certification through Climate Smart Communities. And so we'll get bronze, which is great. It, that also should give us a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars through the nicer to clean energy communities program. So there's a lot of like good things in adopting this report. Definitely, and, and money-wise, it's a good, it's a good thing. And big thanks to Michelle, especially for helping me with the utility receipts. So
Has this ever been done before? Like, have we ever done?
No, no. The county's done it, but the village has never done it.
So I, yeah, yeah.
And, and it will go up on the website. Trustee Frymark is helping me create a simple climate smart website, so we'll have all of these reports available. And I'll, I'll like talk about them in substance when we talk about how we'll use all of our grant funds, so we can show how it's actually addressing, you know, the areas where we have the most emissions.
Narrow, it narrows our focus on what we can address
Yeah.
within our own properties.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Cool.
Do you need to vote to adopt?
Yes. I make a motion to adopt the Village's greenhouse gas inventory for government operations.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Great.
Well done.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yay.
Our husband moved my place off case. Our husband moved my place off case. Not a moment we've all been waiting for. Discussion of the general fund, we're joined by Michelle Ascolillo, who is the. Village Council. As I mentioned earlier, our conversations tonight are focused on the general fund. The majority of village services, including police, what we pay to Royal for garbage and recycling, the Nightwell. Sidewalk and road maintenance, records management, they're all paid for through this fund. Sources of revenue for the general fund include property taxes. Permits and fees, parking meter fees and parking contracts, rental of real properties such as the boat club. Funding from New York State, fines, franchise fees, grants, and trade agreements. Budget lines for the general fund, when you see the budget all come together, are identified with the letter A before the account number. So without further ado, we'll turn it over to Michelle.
Where's that, let's start with. No, the general fund discussions, it's the word documented, it's a narrative, it's things that we should touch on. What complements this is revenue spreadsheets and expense spreadsheets, which are line by line on the budget. So we're gonna start with the revenue, so it might be helpful to have the revenue spreadsheets. Alongside with the discussion topics.
Okay. Can you start?
The preliminary budget. I like, it's a, the state has tentative and adopted, I use preliminary, you know, this is an unbalanced budget, it's not formal. I know that it's unbalanced, you can't have one by March twentieth, will be the tentative budget, it will be balanced. So I use the word preliminary because we know that we have work to do. Through the process, I try to date all of the spreadsheets in the footer. So after every meeting, you'll have a new date to show that there's changes. And I try to do a summary of the big changes in Word document. Like I said, it's unbalanced right now, we are seventy-seven thousand dollars over in expenses over revenue. As we go through these lines and these items, we could talk about places that may be able to bring in more revenue or save on expenses. Take thoughts, concerns from the board as we go. I envision this as more like a conversation, like a presentation, but definitely more a two-sided conversation. So the first topic on revenue is property taxes. Right now, in the proposed preliminary budget, it assumes that the village would levy the maximum tax levy that we can dictated by New York State. That would be a three point nine percent tax levy increase, so the village can bring in three point nine percent more in tax revenue than the prior year. But because of mental factors, the actual per thousand dollar taxable assessed value is a two point nine nine percent increase. So tax bills to the residents is a three percent increase, but it's a four percent increase in revenue. And this is due to additions in building and an increase in the tax roll and some changes to the calculations for the tax cap. This is all within the tax cap, this is the maximum, as we talked last week, two percent is part of the tax cap, it's not actually two percent overall. So this three point nine is where we're at, it's the max, so we can't add tax revenue, but we can decrease it if we wanted to. So that's real property taxes and the fireman's service award, they're lumped together. The fireman's service award is dictated by the contribution for low sap, so those are pretty much fixed numbers. The village pays fifty-two point five percent of the low sap contribution, Phillips Town and Nelsonville also contribute. Roughly eighteen percent and twenty-eight, I think.
So same as the, same as our fees, their fees.
Um, it's been a fixed percentage for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Interest and penalties on property tax, this number is just based on trends. You know, you can't really predict who's going to pay late, but it's an average. Occupancy tax, we budgeted for this last year and they, the law has not been passed at the village level yet. So we're at the, pretty much the same number, like I'm assuming that the hotels, not Airbnb's, just hotels. Occupancy tax collection of five percent would start on September first. It goes up, even though it's the same assumption from last year, it goes up a little bit because some of the hotels have increased their rates from last summer. When all the hotels' websites pulled how many rooms they have and made an assumption that in the busy season. Some of the hotels would have three nights per week, one hotel four nights per week. And that would be, you know, I'm sorry, not September, October, October, November, and then April and May. So five months. If we wanted to assume that the hotels have some kind of occupancy over the winter, you know, we can add a little bit more. This is a new thing, it's hard to project. But I don't think it's fair to say there's no occupancy at all in January, February.
And you're assuming October, that it will take us that long to get there.
So it's. July, August, September. We're proposing to do this quarterly, so even if it's done, say by June first. To work everything out, all the paperwork, do we, does the village want to collect tax on a partial quarter, we can. You know, so if it's adopted, say in June, potentially we could do August and September. But to keep it clean, I did it quarterly for now.
I think she may have to, you know, it's, it's in. The local legislation is almost worth the word, the enabling legislation, it's, it's drafted, it's with the attorney, we need to look at it. It's what comes after the passage that will take some time getting the systems in place, just like we had to put systems in place for. Selling parking permits and tracking that. It's smaller when we start with just hotels rather than. The short-term rentals, it's simpler, I should say, not smaller, but simpler. But we, it's still a system we need to put in place, but I do think you're right that we're certainly, I mean, occupancy and the season extends every year, I just don't know what the right. I'm not sure what the right number would be to put in. I would think that September, you would, you'd want to make an assumption, you could, that you could reasonably make an assumption about September.
So we would do one month instead of collecting a full quarter.
Oh, right, that's what you're suggesting.
The winter, which was Jeff's idea.
Yeah.
I, I left it out, credit where credit's due, if we do one night over the winter, it's forty-five hundred extra in revenue.
I, I don't think that's unreasonable, especially because people come for holidays and people come to visit family.
But I think the bigger question is how soon we realistically feel like we're ready, are we ready to, because there's a lot of things on our plate.
Yeah.
And the budget season's gonna go through until what, end of April, early May?
Right.
No.
No.
It's adopted April twenty, twenty-seven.
Oh, it's end of April.
So end of April, so we're gonna be busy with that until then, and then doing like new legislation, we know how long that process takes, it takes months. There's public hearings and things like that, so the big question I think is like who's carrying that and. Like, are we thinking realistically about the timeline, because we've definitely overshot before.
I mean, I think it's reasonable to, given that, given the state of the draft and the fact that we can't very much from the enabling legis, like they're not spaced to be. Creative and debate like there is in a, in local legislation, this is adopting the boundaries that the, that the state lays out for us in the enabling legislation. So. I don't think, it's not gonna take, it's not gonna be like a zoning project or like the short-term rental project, this one's. Fast, what I would like to do is bundle it with other small modifications that we need to make, record's nearly done. The stuff that we, that we had to set aside when we were full, full on with zoning, et cetera, and update, you know, while we're advertising a public hearing and going through the process. Do them together, like, yeah, package them together.
Why is it doesn't slow down?
What I'm afraid of, you know, because sometimes we, we try to be efficient and we're too used to it.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we can, once the draft goes around and you all look at it and we get word back from the attorney that we've, we've done what we needed to do, we can work back on a calendar from there. I think us getting the legislation done is reasonable to be a, to be a June goal. And then what, the system setup is, that's something I think that you guys would need to estimate more in terms of rollout.
Yeah, just a couple things on the timeline, budget fraud, tense of purposes, April tenth. The heavy lifting, you know, ninety-five percent of budget work is done by April tenth before we go to public hearing.
Yeah.
Something after that is really weak, so you do have some time there. We probably should be, also need to talk to maybe Pink Hillland and a couple of properties to see what they have to do and what do they have to do on their end. I don't know if they have any something with systems that they have to update in order to start adding that five percent tax. I think if we're others, you know, we're making the assumption that they want. But that may, but that may, but they need to program for it, I don't know.
What's the appropriate method for doing that?
Reach out, I mean, we could reach out, I could talk to Vera, I'd pick a one and.
You gotta laugh during the budget, a little bit.
We're at the point that, you know, we're a year and a half into since the state passed the legislation.
Yeah, we have until summer twenty twenty-five and then we have to ask for renewal.
Yes, for renewal of itself.
Uh, we can't wait till summer twenty twenty-five because they're not in.
It expires, then we have to ask prior, so I think that process starts in the fall.
So I can, I, I, I can take this on as a project, I know we're looking for an owner. I don't mind taking it on because everybody's gonna go in and yell at Eliza anyway, so.
Okay, well, I'll give you, I'll give you the draft as it stands and, and let John first know that you'll be the lead on it, thank you, Erin. And you'll work with Jeff on the. Communicating with the hotel folks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, but that takes care of one issue, but the question still remains, how, if this is like a full year. Or a partial year, and I guess my, my question about that is. Why wouldn't we just tax year round?
We would.
Okay.
Want to start.
No.
Oh.
I thought the issue was.
How much money to count in our expected revenue, like how much are we actually gonna get in January for hotel sales?
Hey, I, I feel like, you know, I, I'm reading between the lines that we'd collect quarterly, right? And so, you know, that's why Michelle was saying whether we collect a partial quarter or something, right, in September, or wait until the October to December quarter. To collect first, and, and I think budgeting, it's, it's better to be conservative on revenue, you know, and when we have moved slowly in the past, so. So for the budgeting purposes, probably just limit it to the three-month period this year would be, I think, prudent. If we can start earlier, great, then we have extra revenue.
I would agree. When you say three-month period. Can you clarify? So just the last quarter of the village or last quarter of the calendar year, so I'm, I'm proposing October, November, December, and then. Five months in the following year, so that would be eight months.
That's, yes, I have to adjust my head to fiscal years, I'm sorry.
You only have four months.
Yeah, and then we talked about doing one. For then, seven.
And when does that, what's our fiscal year, I'm sorry, June one to May thirty-one? And, and you're not including June here? Oh, June one, okay.
So we can leave what's in the budget because that's starting in October and then add in, you know, one night a week for the winter months. So that adds forty-five hundred, and I think that's still conservative.
Yeah.
Okay. Parking lot, there is a decrease in revenue over last year because of the forty Main Street. That's a loss of twenty-five, an estimated loss of twenty-five thousand.
That's being, that is under conversation with the village attorney, so we don't know what the outcome of that is yet.
What should we come to the budget?
Sorry?
What should we assume for the budget, though?
Next year?
Do you mean, well, obviously for next year.
I have zero.
I, I, it won't, I don't imagine that it will be zero, but my sense is that there will be a request to consider under. The parking plan that's, I'm sorry, the parking requirements that are now laid out in the zoning code. So not twenty-five, but not zero. I just, I don't know when that's gonna resolve, I'm hoping it's, it's under discussion now.
Save the budget for zero. If there isn't anything we can find.
Probably so, I mean.
We don't know.
Put that into the ether, but you're probably right. As an assumption, I mean, not that it's not happening.
And when does the Hudson House lease end?
Fired for quite some time, it needs to be revisited. So that's. Another opportunity, but. How quickly can we get it done, right? I, that's, that's among the, that's among the goals of the next cycle, and that's something that has been sitting unattended to for longer than we've been here. But we haven't gotten to it yet either, and it needs to happen.
Yeah, Hudson Houses, their total lease is only fifty-five hundred, so even if it was to increase. I'm not sure how significant to the budget impact that would be.
When did it expire?
April, so.
And so, but that was the last, that was the last number that was negotiated and that.
It was a three or four-year contract that had built-in three percent increases.
I mean, I think that we.
So we'll have to leave it, I think, at what it is, it's, hasn't even been talked about yet, so there's no way to know what that increase could possibly be. Parking meter fees, Main Street is four dollars per hour, approximately ninety spaces, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from ten to six. You know, for eight months, assuming seventy percent occupancy, four months, thirty-five percent occupancy. Those numbers, again, parking on Main Street has never been done before, metering it. You know, we know that we can't assume a hundred percent occupancy all the time, is seventy percent and thirty-five percent fair numbers, open to discussion, it's what we used last year.
It's only eighty parking spots, because we lost twenty and we extended the crosswalk.
Okay, I pulled ninety from an older iteration of a sheet that you had worked on, so eighty now. So that'll drop some parking meter revenue.
But I'm curious what others think, I, now I start to worry about the seventy, seventy percent for eight months consistently. What, what worries you, that the spaces will be filled or that people will pay? Oh, I don't. I was thinking filled, but it's a good point also of. That they're not paying, yeah, they're getting ticketed.
Which is.
Yeah, I mean, I was. Yeah, 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 I was thinking filled.
Although Laura brings up a good point, when we did these calculations last year, it's just Saturday and Sunday, which are busier than Friday, so seventy percent on a Friday may be overstated.
Well, conservatively, you pick, you pick a smaller number, I think it's interesting to see how Fridays are picking up already. But I think being conservative in our estimates, good, will be.
I don't know, I mean, we don't know how much people are going to go to the Metro North lot instead of go to Main, like how much of people are gonna change their behavior because of the people, you don't have a sense of that, yeah, and so I, I didn't. Um, just. I want to believe that these numbers are the case, but it's, but it's a big.
Friday, they won't be going to a pub.
Would be for a different reason, so maybe seventy percent is, I mean, Thursday mornings, there's no spots.
It's pretty full most of the time, up to a certain point, you know, up by Saint Mary's lawn, it might be empty on a Friday, but Saturday and Sunday.
Forget it.
It's full, so I think seventy percent is a fairly conservative number for all three days. They still like. Yeah, I mean, well, so for, we say eight months.
Seven months, I thought.
But it says eight there. It's dead, January, February, March. So I think, yeah, I think those are good numbers. April's deadish, but. April's deadish, but.
Well, we'll have a little bit of ability to test this, right? I mean, the meter's going to affect April first, but that's a Monday, so it's effectively April fifth, right?
Yeah.
And, and so, assuming it's nice weather, or even if it's not, I mean, we'll be able to see before we finalize the budget. And get a little bit more confidence in whatever assumptions we make here.
Maybe, maybe, April's early. My concern is that if we're ten percent off, that's thirty-two thousand dollars. Unlike one of these other ones where if we're ten percent off, it's five hundred dollars. It's a big, like, yeah, so we should just really think about, we should just really think about our assumptions in that.
Just keep in mind that just going from the ninety to eighty spots is eleven percent reduction, so take eleven percent off this three hundred and twenty thousand. That's the words.
And. We, we also, we've, we've heard from a lot of people and business leaders, they, they are very worried about the four dollars an hour, so. You know, if we're, if we're locking too much into a budget that assumes four dollars an hour, that, the, you know, that, that. Ties our hands a lot for, for being reactive, if that's something that we need to do.
We should not say reactive, because changing parking meter fees is a, is a fee schedule change. And a process, so. We can be responsive.
Fine, I meant them as synonyms.
Setting public expectation that we're not, we're not adjusting, we're not adjusting rates on Main Street willy-nilly, there's a process. Do you think that, would you be more comfortable being conservative at sixty percent, at sixty-five percent? I, I take your point, Laura, that being, if, if we're off here, we've got a big hole. Yeah. Sixty-five percent, I don't, I mean, I'm curious, Michelle, you, you are usually conservative, then you wrote this down, but it just feels like. Um, we're really in the hole if we. Were off.
I mean, I guess it's all relative, so when we started this process last budget cycle, we were starting at a hundred percent occupancy for all hours that the meters were on. So to go from a hundred percent down to seventy percent was a big change. I don't see Main Street every day, I really can't gauge it, I, I have no idea. I know that a hundred percent is not reasonable. I don't know.
I. I would be comfortable. Somewhere between sixty and seventy, I would, um. Just watching that, I mean, we, we are here every day on, on Main Street, you, you're, you're on Main Street every day. It's packed, the, the lower portion is, you know, from, from basically the firehouse down, it's full all week. Okay, sure, but how many, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling like I'm playing a little bit more devil's advocate than I should, but I'll just do it. A number of them are also ones that sit all day, that are not gonna sit there when there's a parking meter. There are people who live here or who are parking for the whole, like, there, there are cars that sit, and there are employees. And I think we have the idea that, you know, we're looking forward to having more space available for, um, shoppers and people. You know, turnover and everything, but, um. You know.
Could probably see, or suddenly see Main Street quite sparse. You know, as a response, if all those cars that you're saying are parking there all day are no longer doing that.
Yes, but if we're talking about, the meters are operating Friday through Sunday and on holidays that land on Monday. There's, Main Street is never sparse on those days, and especially in the season.
Right, but if you touch the shopkeepers, all their employees are parking on Main Street.
But I'm saying, once their employees move.
Yeah.
There's room for the shop, for shoppers. They're generally on our side streets and not really on the main street, so. The whole, the whole venture of meter parking on Main Street and resident parking is an experiment, yeah, we have no idea. I take, and, and we also, there are going to be impacts that we have tried to foresee impacts. We know people are gonna begin to shift even more into the Upper Village until that's locked down better. Which we did not have the funding to do this year, and we need some more discussions. But that is, that is a reality, that people will go higher in the village, looking for free parking. People will. Yeah, we've predicted many things, there are some things that we will not be able to predict, and we're just gonna have to see how it goes. So what's, throw out a number that you feel more comfortable with? Given that none of us have a. Well, sixty-five percent.
I mean. Yeah, I, 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 I feel like, um, you know, it better to be. Well, first of all, I'm, I'm a little worried when we get to expenses, because our expenses already out. Uh, you know, um, outspend, uh, income by seventy-seven thousand dollars, so, you know, anything we. Cut from here is gonna be extra hard on when we get to the expense portion, right? So I'm, but my sense is, you know, let's be really super conservative here. Um, and it will learn as we go along and we can make adjustments. I mean, the budget's the budget, but there, I believe there is room during the budget year to, to, to do more and to spend more. It, it is a budget, but we're not fully locked in. And, you know, I think, I think a lot of the estimations are based on how the traffic is now, but parking is free now and it will not be free. Right, so, um, you know, my best. Thing to put out there is let's cut this in half. And, and we can raise it as we go through this budget process, right? As we go through expenses, if there's things that we really.
Oh, in the, yeah, so in the later part, to actually amend a budget is a whole controller process, like, once it's adopted.
It needs through the.
But, yes. Yeah.
So like, uh, to, to Erin's point, like, after seeing a few weekends, like, the first weekend of April. Will at least inform us like how people behave.
That's a big chunk of the budget to, to leave unsettled until that close to adoption date and public hearing.
Well, we're guessing either way. Have some numbers that will, could give us an informed guess.
I mean, just to, just to be clear, I don't, I don't think we'll learn a lot within the first week or two of April, right? Um, I, what I'm saying is, let's make a very conservative assumption. At this point in the next couple of weeks of budget process. And when we begin reviewing general fund revenue, expenses. We might find something that we really need to do, that we need to raise money for, and then we can consider raising it again. But I'd rather go into the expense process with a low assumption of revenue, rather than a perhaps inflated assumption of revenue.
That seems extreme. Michelle needs to submit a balanced budget on March twentieth, right? And it's so, and she, there's no way she's gonna balance it if we cut this in half. And, and that just feels like, like work for her, that is.
So it depends, so the skipping ahead to the expense budget, it is over. Because it does build in, um, an additional full-time employee for the highway department. And it converts a part-time staff in Village Hall to a full-time. Those are the two biggest changes expense-wise on the expense side. So if we were to drop this in half, those two positions revert to, to lose the extra on highway. And you'd keep the part-time here.
It just, I, I am, I agree with dropping it down, I think dropping it in half is, is too much, it's, it's too dramatic. I mean it. I don't know, thoughts from others?
Et cetera.
Yeah, and treasure, yes.
On the number two, if you cut this in half, so you take this down to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Plus already in the hole seventy-seven on it, that we need to make up, we're talking two hundred and thirty thousand dollar gap.
Yeah.
But so, imagine. The parking starts and Main Street's sparse and. People's habits change to all the free parking places, like Metro North. Right, and people are avoiding paying the four dollars an hour because they can park for three hours. Right, just imagine worst case scenario, right? Um, things that we can do to maneuver to amend that or to address that. Might be to drop the meter prices and add more days. Like, we can wiggle it around to make it more palatable for the public. Um, and still find a way to meet our goals potentially.
It's hard for me to imagine, given what we have seen, particularly in the busiest season. Even when. Main Street is parked in all the way to the village line, the side streets are parked in all the way up to the village line. Setting aside the P streets, because no one seems to go over there, ooh, said it out loud. Um, but that, those, those streets do seem to escape the pattern, um, or the seeking of parking. Even on, even with that availability, people are still trolling, looking for Main Street parking, so. Yes, but, uh, what I'm saying is, when, when there are very few options, people still troll Main Street. So I, I don't see us having suddenly a dirt of visitors on our busiest weekends. I, I mean, maybe I'm overly optimistic, but.
No, I think we'll still be here, I just think that there, like, again, I'm only throwing out the worst case scenario, right? And, and if that happens, like, can we get creative to make sure we still meet our budget goals? You know, can we do five days a week at, you know, a half rate or something like that, but like move it around so that we can.
Yeah, five days a week is gonna, is gonna be very unpalatable to residents. It also means changing the code, the, like, residential code and changing the signs. Because if we don't change the residential parking. Days, then people will just go to the, they'll just go.
It'll be complicated, it'll be hard, and we can't really do it fast, but, but these are. Like, in, in a worst case scenario, like, you know, how are we gonna solve that? Because if we're suddenly not making the revenue we expected.
Wait, wait, can I ask you where the, for Erin and Eliza, where is the, um. Lack of confidence in Main Street revenues coming from now? After having gone through the process of reviewing the residential plan and the meter plan where your confidence was high? How are we suddenly at a low confidence level?
For me, it's not a lack of confidence, it's prudence. Uh, it's, it's just if, if, it's, it's what Laura said, if, if we're wrong, even by ten percent, that's a big hole. And so how do we minimize the risk of being wrong by ten percent? And I'd rather be ten percent under than ten percent over.
Agreed. I guess what I'm trying to find is a. A compromise between the extreme slash, which I think is not realistic. Um, and where we are right now, which also might not be realistic, I'm trying to, I, I think something in between.
Like maybe better. Then it's not, definitely not in between, but it's reducing to seventy percent.
Yeah, and, and also, uh, just to be clear, I was proposing this fifty percent as, as a bit more of a thought exercise. Like, we go back and revise that next week, right? I mean, once, once we, let's, let's make a lower assumption and then go back and review expenses and then really weigh. The, the risk and benefit of the changes that we wanna make to the expense side. And if we absolutely can't live without them, then let's renew this discussion about the expected, expected fees. Because, you know, the budget's not finished until it's finished, so. That, that's what I mean, I don't mean to revise the budget in three months, I mean to.
Of course, of course. I mean, but what you're suggesting is, I mean, the budget process is supposed to be iterative, right? We're supposed to try numbers, see what works, go back, revise, et cetera. Um, I just don't wanna handicap, I don't wanna handicap the process to a point that we're. We, we've lost reality in the other direction, so let's, let's save this.
Make a different number.
The tentative budget needs to be balanced. But by no means does that tentative budget have to look anything like the adopted budget. In the past, there's usually not that many changes, but some. Once we hit the public hearing, unless there's significant public comment, we don't usually change the budget. But you can change it from today all the way up until adoption date, so long as it stays balanced. If we were to drop these numbers very conservatively, like I said, the first thing to go is going to be staff. Unless there's another way to find eighty-five thousand dollars.
Having said that, that, that is keeping our staffing levels where we are right now. And the proposals that have been put forward have been to attempt to relieve some of our staff shortages. So it would be a continuation of the status quo if those positions got pulled.
So what I guess, what I'm saying is, if we, if we dropped it today, in the interest of getting to a balanced budget, drop it. In expense and revenue, and then have a more isolated conversation on. You know, putting things back in and let the board sit on what they really wanna do, this sounds like it's a bigger decision. A lot of decisions we can make on the spot or within the day, this sounds like one of those, let's sit on it, make a decision next week.
Give me guidance for where, where to plug in numbers.
So, right now, instead of cutting it fifty percent in half as it shows. Using a fifty percent occupancy instead. Um, dropping the spaces by ten, dropping that seventy to fifty, eighty-five thousand comes off the top. And that could be a spot to start. And then, um. We'll revisit this next week with, and make a decision collectively.
Erin, when you were saying drop by half, did you mean the, the total or the occupancy? I understood you to be meaning the total.
I mean, I meant, I meant the total, but I think what Michelle is proposing is, is a, is just as good a starting point.
Kinda, and also, this line also has the parking lot in it, so if you cut it totally in half, we're cutting the parking lot as well. So I backed out the parking lot numbers, which is sixty-one thousand. And then, you know, two seventies, the Main Street number. So that two seventy comes down to one eighty-five, and the parking lot still sits at sixty-one. So the parking lot, lots, sixty-one thousand, I get that the parking lot in front of Fair Street, Mayor's Park, on Fair Street in front of Mayor's Park. Um, is not usable right now. But because the parking rates have changed so much and it's all seasonal. I took this year's data up until we are, and then the three months prior, and that's where I got my, I took out ten thousand. Park mobile, we tried to look in some transactions, the reports were not as easy as I thought they would be, to just be like. This is what Fair Street was two weeks, two years ago last year. Um, but I think ten thousand sounds like a reasonable number to discount us, and I also use this year's numbers, which already. Partially has Fair Street not in it.
Yes.
Um, so I, I'm comfortable with that ten thousand deduction for Fair plus using for Mayor's Park, yeah. Um, so we'll do that, we'll go to one eighty-five for Main Street for right now.
And revisit it then up next week.
Now that we've gone through parking meters.
Parks and Rec, um, we used to have ticketed events, um, haven't really been happening, so I don't have a large number here. Um, park, it's just a couple barbecues, maybe a wedding. Those are those application fees.
Yeah.
Um, zoning planning, they don't really bring in that much, it's not, uh, HRB brings in more application fees. Um, refuse and garbage charges, these are the charges that, for the residents who request additional service that we bill back.
Um, can you pause for a second on fees to boards?
Mm-hmm.
Um, when were planning board and zoning board last it looked at? I know HTRB updated, I don't know, within the last, like, four years ago, right?
Updated.
It's sketch, fee schedule, have planning and zoning been revisited recently? So that's, I don't remember what the, what their fees are without.
Dollars in application rate still, fifty for zoning, fifty for planning, and thirty for HTRB.
Planning, they just set up a escrow.
Right. The costs come out of the escrow. Um, HTRB does a, an additional fee for public hearing. When someone's asking for a variance, there is, with X B A, and there's already, you know, you've, you've got a, a public hearing baked into the process. Are we covering, are we covering the administrative costs of those boards with the fees we're charging?
Um, fifty, if the application fee is thirty dollars, no.
No.
Definitely not. That's one and a quarter hours worth of work.
And you're talking about, right, yeah, when you say thirty, you're talking about HTRB. You mean the public hearing fee went from eighty-five to thirty? Or the general application? I know many of that happened.
It's peanuts.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing is you don't wanna raise fees to a point that you discourage people from making applications and and. Complying with local laws, so. I was just, I was just curious. Sorry, Michelle, keep going.
Fire protection services, um, this is based off of actual expenses. Plus the fire department's request, Nelson Villes is an actual. Um, fee that will charge them, so, and Phillips Town is a rough estimate, um, because we're on different fiscal years.
What goes, do these, I I guess. You explain briefly what goes into these fees, how how it's calculated and.
So the fire, the Village of Cold Spring Fire Company. Provides fire protection services to the village. Part of Phillips Town and Nelsonville. So the village owns the building, we pay for all the building expenses. We pay for workers' compensation, we pay for Lo Sap, all of those things. So the village comes up with a total number of expenses to run the fire company. Plus, the fire company makes a request saying that they need X amount of dollars to run the company on the fire. Fighting side, equipment, you know, turnout gear, whatever it is. So you take those two numbers, you add them together. A couple years ago, um, the board had come up with this calculation based on. Trends and. Actual expenses, the village ends up paying fifty-two percent of the total cost, Phillips Town pays twenty-eight and a half percent. And Nelsonville is eighteen and a half, maybe twenty-six and eighteen. Um, but around those. Um, and it's been like that since it was revised several years ago. Um, so then those town, the town and the village of Nelsonville pay us fire protection services. But a portion of it goes up top to the Lo Sap number, and the rest of it sits down here.
Feel like I asked last year.
If you need spreadsheets, I have those, I go into it, you're over here.
But it sounds like that's fully covering. Sounds like it's quite fairly distributing the costs and that it's covered.
One year lag, but it's really only like a thousand or two variants, you're over here.
It's nineteen percent from Nelsonville, twenty-nine.
Yeah, and it's based on, is it, I don't know if it's population or household, but it's tied back to a logic.
Yeah, great, how, who.
It was like a two-year process to get it there, and it's worked.
No, I'm not opening that again.
Interest and earnings, uh, this is the interest on the money market bank account for the general fund. Um, the general fund does have a one point four million fund balance, plus the operating. Um, the interest at the banks used to be like point oh one, it is point one five now. So it's been like that since prior to June, uh, so if we keep that, it becomes twenty-five thousand, although interest used to be. Nothing, that's why it's such a significant jump, but if you look at year-to-date through January, we're at eight thousand. And I think that. This month, it might have even went up to point two percent. Still sounds low, but on one point four, it's a big number to the village and something that we haven't seen in the past.
We can't just put that like in a certificate of deposit or something for for.
Um, there is a village board of trustees financial policy and investment policy, you'd have to look into that to see what's appropriate. But it is the mostly the fund balance, not the operating, um, so you could possibly look into a portion of it. Um, we also need to remember that fund balance not only pays for things one time, but if necessary, could float. Um, cash flow purposes, if we were getting a grant that's getting reimbursed, we'd have to cash out first. Uh, so you wouldn't wanna tie it all up.
Yeah, I mean, that's what Fair Street's gonna be, is paying out and getting reimbursed.
Permits and other, and waivers, should just be other permits. This is mostly C-streak, um, have a discussion about C-streak. Right now, on their proposed schedule, it's twenty-one docking days. In the budget, it's assuming that half those days are docked and half those days are undocked. Um, because there is a roughly six hundred and something dollar difference for the. Uh, dock versus undock. If they were to start instead of on September twenty-first and they came Labor Day weekend, that adds three weekends, which is seven days if we include Labor Day. That could be a potential twelve thousand dollars in extra revenue if. If they're willing to do that, that also assumes half docked, half undocked. Not sure what C-streak is looking at in terms of dates and or docking.
Well, two things, um, I've, I've reached out to our contact at West Point to confirm. I think James said he was proposing all docking at West Point, I want West Point to say that, not James. But carry on, you had the conversation with.
So I, I spoke with James and he would like to, um, continue the schedule that was proposed last year. I'd need to go back and check with him to see if. That's starting in the beginning of September, cause originally he was meaning to, and then they didn't sell enough tickets, so they dropped, fell out. But, um, and I think we're late on the contract negotiation, so the idea is.
The storm, it was, there were so many things in flux because West Point's dock was.
Yeah, there were a lot of things that like slowed the process down, um, and didn't get him there till mid-September, but. Um, I think he would be open to starting in Labor Day if we were willing to do so. Um, especially since we're not gonna do Community Day at that time, um, but a holiday would be good for his business. So. But from what he said, he's planning on resuming tours to West Point, dropping people off there. Dropping people up here, so that was how he was planning on doing all the docking there, so that would be sort of back and forth thing. Um, he did say he might be interested in adding Saturdays through month of the summer. Um, again, if if the village is willing to consider that.
I understand him to be asking for just August, is that right?
He didn't give me a proposal yet, I mean, he's, you know, like, he's towing in because he hasn't done these. Ticket sales in the summer before, um, he's working on a. Like tour that goes up to not Cornwall, but some town just further up the river that has vineyards.
Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, so he's, he's considering doing that and then having this as part of that tour and, um. And it did sound like it was August Saturdays, but he hadn't, like I said, look, I told him to like look at his calendar and his. Ideas and offer us proposals to consider.
And if he does, I mean, I mean, thinking about being conservative in your estimates, if he does secure Marlboro, which he did not do last year ultimately. Um, they have a deep water dock. Um, which we do not have on offer in Cold Spring, so, you know, there is the possibility. That they would want to dock there, and so it may be that there is more appeal for them over time. I'm, I'm super concerned about. Putting. Too much confidence on the C-streak side, only because. There were so many cancellations, I, I mean, last year was unusual for lots of reasons with the storm. But it does seem like it's been harder and harder for them to sell tickets. I think that the, um. The idea of a cancellation fee has to stay.
What about, I mean, this sort of, your point about Marlboro sort of niggies, this potentially, but what about? Because the difference in docking versus not docking is is significant. Requiring some certain amount of dockages, I don't know if that's a word, here, so that we could. Secure that additional. Amount.
I mean, we kind of set the terms of the negotiation, so if that's something that we wanna require. Um, you know, it it might be a little confusing to him since we were like pushing so hard to keep him off our dock.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there as a.
Now we're gonna punish him for it, like, or or demand more, but but it's alright. Yeah, we, we have to negotiate it based on what we need.
Yeah, except remember why we got to that place, which was public concern about having the dope, the the dope docked there. The boat docked there, um, all day long.
You know, a char, a problem for our residents, so that was why we did that.
Also, I, I mean, just, not for nothing, I, I wor, I do also worry about strain on the dock. You know, on our, as part of our capital considerations. Um, having the Army Corps do an assessment of structure and where we are with that is important. So, uh, Eliza put forward their request to consider Saturdays in the summer. Um, how do trustees feel about that? And it's unclear how many, I understood him to be saying August, you're saying he's, he's not yet decided.
Right, because he's still trying to figure out the schedule, but if he has a boat going up to Marlboro. He would love to make business stop on the way. If that works, it's, and.
But Marlboro's gonna be an apple season run, that's not a summer run, right?
Uh, for the vineyards, it's a summer thing.
Oh, for the vineyards, I was thinking about the apple orchard.
Yeah, I know. Wine drinking and.
Hearing from you, cause you've had, you've been pretty vocal about this topic over time.
I think it depends on how many you add up, right? Like, it's hard, it. Some of it is like looking at the whole schedule and and being able to see like how many did that add up to, so.
So if it was Labor Day through November tenth, that would be twenty-seven. Twenty-eight, if you can count Labor Day, twenty-eight.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Some Fridays, depending, based on what Fridays they used last year.
October, so last year they did through September, Saturday, Sunday, and. Um, in November, they did Saturday, Sunday, and then in October, they did. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then there was a holiday on a Monday in one day there, and they included that.
And so if if they're not docking here at all. Um, and then assuming that they start September first. That's a net increase of twenty-nine hundred instead of the twelve thousand that I was originally thinking, cause I had it half docked, half undocked. So if they're always undocked, September first to November tenth, we can add twenty-nine hundred to the current number.
It sounds also like, if they're, if this is part of a longer trip, they're not gonna spend four hours here. It would be like a two-hour stop and then they go to Marlboro?
They've dropped some people, so they're selling two tickets. You can buy a Cold Spring ticket or a Marlboro ticket. They'll drop you off here or there, wherever you want, and stop, and then they'll come back and pick you up.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I still have less, I think that undocked have less of an impact. Just on the. So. I mean, is it, is it, and I'm ju- just throwing out an i- an idea, is it. Reasonable to say, alright, we're. We are meeting requests for. Undocking, assuming that West Point, once we talk to West Point, assuming that West Point is available all the way through. In trade, and having made, not in trade, but in having, having made those arrangements to accommodate the request. We would be open to Saturdays in August as a trial, as long as we keep the cancellation fee.
I'm open to that.
So as assuming, assuming docking is secure at West Point, so they're not docking here in the fall. Offering, offering August, I mean, I don't think, I I know there's been chatter about the entire summer. Some, some merchants have been, merchants and event planners have been talking about the entire summer. I can't even imagine.
Like, you know, like, just test it out. He doesn't even know if it's gonna be successful, so, he's also not like, I want it all, he's kind of like. See how it goes, is kind of the way he talks about it.
I think it makes sense, I also, given the cancellations that we've been experiencing, it's not that number. The boats that actually happen, yeah, right, so.
How are you factoring in cancellation in the number?
I'm not assuming, I'm assuming they dock every time it's in the contract. They only really, once the contract got going, it was only one true cancellation.
And and cancellation, I believe, happened mostly because that was the beginning of the season and didn't have enough time to sell tickets.
And it was before the contract was signed, so.
I think that we really need to look at, like, trying to get this contract settled and things with him settled sooner than later. So that we don't run into that problem, if there's cancellations, it will not be our fault. Or any like, well, it must be. Weather, it'll, it'll be a hurricane.
So are he, in Eliza's initial conversation, so that James can put a pro- proposal before us. Are we, do we have consensus around looking at? August, is it just Saturdays in August, Saturdays in August? Aaron? That's yes, I think, okay. And I will follow up with West Point and let you know. What their, what's that misses. But yesterday, last year, there was a gap that we reported in, yeah, okay.
Next line is parking permits, um, we've sold about two hundred so far, assuming there'll be a couple strugglers coming in, two hundred and twenty at fifty dollars. Um, that's two hundred and, um, two hundred and twenty would be eleven thousand. Fines, these are the fines brought in by the justice court, it's based on a five-year average, um, and then I added. You know, um, a low number, maybe officer Burke, if you would mind weighing in. So the fines, five-year average would be sixty-nine thousand. It puts seventy-nine thousand here, thinking for ten thousand in extra parking enforcement revenue. But I believe parking tickets are fifty dollars.
Seventy-five. There's seventy-five.
Other tickets went up too.
The ten thousand dollars at seventy-five a ticket is a hundred and thirty-three more tickets. Over a six-month busy season, you know, it's actually not that many tickets. You know, I don't wanna overstep here either, and we're hoping that everybody pays the meter and everything's fine. But this is also residential parking violations.
I think that's where you, that's where most of it's gonna land, is people park where they shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, well, not, we passed that conversation, but I honestly think that's what's gonna happen. Enforcement will go up. People coming here just for the day, we'll figure it. It's worth it.
I mean, a ticket is a, is a, an afternoon parking in the city.
Will I, will I get ticketed this time or not?
Assuming that we have parking enforcement working, ten thousand dollars. Is roughly an increase of two and a half tickets a week. Um, sounds kind of low, I would think.
But I guess it'll be a little higher than that, but I'd be safe to say go with your numbers.
Two and a half tickets, so.
Anything above that, it's, I don't mean to say this way, but anything above that. Could be above that, I, my feeling is, unless I would go with, that sounds about right.
Right, and enforcement is not where we wanna get our revenue, but we want it to work.
So that, so we're staying within the way that you have, or it's changing?
No, I did it based off fifty dollars a ticket, maybe we can up it a little bit.
Seventy-five, other ones also handicap the fire hydrant, which we do write, not a tremendous amount, but we do, we do write over the, over the last course, the last three years.
Fifty, I think, two hundred, either two hundred or two hundred and fifty.
What were they?
They were, they were twenty, the block drive was also twenty-five and they went up, I think there's, what did we put it up to?
Have it in my head, I'd have to look at the code.
Twenty-five to roughly two hundred.
Yeah, like, I think it was a hundred to.
I'll have to relook at the fines and fees, I've always done a five-year average and then adjusted it, you know. Based on a couple factors, this one being parking enforcement and residential parking enforcement. If fines themselves have gone up, that's, this is an area that I'm going to have to relook at.
It's seventy-five dollars or two hundred, if it's a safety violation. Or a blocked driveway, like an access problem, it's two hundred dollars, if it's a parking problem, that's not safety oriented, it's seventy-five.
I remember we had it on two, two hundred or two fifty, two hundred. When did that go into effect? Uh, when we had the public hearing in November?
But I don't know that our tickets were updated. Right, but I don't know that our tickets were updated.
They were updated about a month ago.
Yeah.
Parking in an ADA space, without a permit, went from two hundred to two fifty. In a crosswalk, like, two hundred to two fifty, blocked driveway went from two hundred to two fifty.
Don't make any big decisions for the next two months.
So I will relook at the fines and fees, um, we had made an adjustment when the parking lot first came in. Um, it sounds like we'll have to make another adjustment, because an average with increased rates isn't there. To the budget, it's gonna be understated.
We just made some money.
That much.
Okay, I was right, thank you.
Yeah, ADA is two hundred. Residential set parking or residential out of permit, seventy five, five meters, seventy five. Parking door prohibited times, most of the parking ones are seventy five.
Unless they're not paid within thirty days or sixty days, sixty days, I think it could be further.
Yeah.
Next, uh, so we were planning on doing sale, auction of unused equipment in the current fiscal year. Uh, the reality of an auction happening and being completed by May thirty first is probably unrealistic. Um, so I think it's safe to just roll this projected revenue source into next year's budget, which is eighteen thousand, because it's. It's two trucks and two cars, and eighteen thousand might be low, but we do sell these things. Very low, because they're usually beyond their. Um, useful life by the time they go to auction. State aid section aim has been the same for fifteen years, mortgage tax is. Has gone down back to roughly pre-COVID figures, mortgage tax as a percentage of the tax on all new mortgages in the village. It surged for a couple years with COVID, and it's slowly come back down and it's really back down now. State aid, nice third, um, I will work with Laura to figure out how much of the nicer to grants will be in the general fund versus the water and sewer. But it's a net zero impact to the budget, because the grant revenue will match the grant expense, right now neither one of them are here. Um, the same thing goes for chips, there is no revenue for chips or expense for chips in the past. Always put the maximum allowable chips that we have allocated to the village at the state. This year, assuming that the state passes their budget with no changes to the chips program. We're looking at four hundred and fifty thousand, to put another four fifty in the budget on the revenue expense side. If we know that chips have been happening, it's it's a big number to put in. Again, it's net zero, but it does increase that bottom line number. You know, it looks like we have a three point five million dollar budget, when it's really a three point two maybe, if we're using half the chips. Um, I think it's time to relook at this.
It's a separate, it's a separate conversation, um, I think. Identifying the chips, we had a chips project identified last year, it's on. Fish Gill, we started the engineering, the storm happened, um, so we were on our way to the first chips project since two thousand seventeen. I would love for us to be able to do it, to spend some of that chips money on there a couple of streets that really, really need attention. Um, but I think it's a separate discussion.
Which we'll have to have by next week.
For a number.
You're saying not to put, not to put it in the budget.
Well, it depends, if the work's gonna be done next year, it has to be there.
But we don't have any sense of, if I were to pick, this is just me, if I were to pick two streets for for chips. Money, it would be the end of Fair Street from from um, Main to Cross. And old, and the other would be Benedict from ninety back to Marion, where there's.
We have no numbers, right, so we can't actually, I guess the question is, do we just put another four hundred and fifty seven thousand in? And then, you know, we haven't spent chips money, the village as a whole since before twenty one. It was the fiscal year before that, so this money keeps getting reallocated and reallocated, um, is that something that the board wants to do?
I mean, I, go ahead.
So my thinking on it is like with any projects that we plan for, like, who's gonna carry it, you know? Like, putting in the budget, you can put it there and then it doesn't get spent, and we've done that before. But like, we have to know someone's carrying these projects to get them done.
And chips projects are, it's not Bugsy and the guys going out for three days, chips project is, it gets engineered. By Han or whoever we're working with, right, they bring up codes and standards on the project. They do construction drawings, they bid it, they see it through. That, it's chips project of that scale project, so I would say. That kind of project is not something that we're carrying internally, but that we're working with our engineers to carry. Had, but bearing in mind that right now they're fully engaged on Fair Street and the water treatment plant, I mean, I think it's aspirational. To do a project this year, the the roads desperately need attention, can we pull it all off? I I don't know.
Do we reach out to Han and find out if they have the capacity to add another project?
That's the conversation.
Because that's what it's gonna come down to.
I mean, it did have an initial conversation with Will about it, and we got pulled into talking about Fair Street and never finished it, so I'll go back. He's actually coming in on Thursday, so I'll have a conversation with him then. It would be, I'm. Phil's street repairs.
But but in reality, like, really, it's the win people.
I think if when the state budget passes, April first, I'll also tell us.
Yeah, but you know what, it's like the veterans, it's like the veterans benefits, every year, everybody goes, oh, the governor's gonna cut them, and then they get restored in the budget process. I I can't, it's hard to imagine.
Then if that happens, we're still talking about three, if they don't cut it, we're still talking about three hundred and fifty thousand, and. This is one question that's more conceptual.
Yeah.
What does the board want to see in the budget presented?
Um, aspirationally, I would like us to attempt, I would like us to attempt a chips project, but I think some of that relies upon. I think if you wanna model it for next week, and we'll see what feedback we get from Han.
How much was the Garden, Garden Street was last chips project, do we know how much that was?
Michelle has numbers on it, it's a long time ago.
Yeah, but maybe that's the, it gives an order of magnitude, I don't know if it's like.
That also depends on what you're doing.
Pre-COVID, prices have changed significantly. Things aren't, um, apples to apples, you know, you can go into a project thinking that you're gonna pave it and put in a sidewalk, and then. They mill it, and then something's wrong, and then the drainage, and um, it's it's.
Well, I think we have to assume with, particularly with the end of Fair Street, there's subsurface stuff going on. Some of it, like, like, let's all be realistic, some of it is going to be in the residential lines. And when you open the street, it's gonna reveal problems that are, that belong to residents under the code. Um, but that stretch, it's got big, big divots and drops, there's stuff going on under there.
So this is separate from the Fair Street.
I'm talking about the block of Fair Street from Main to Cross, where there is so much disruption from tree roots and. Um, what I imagine are leaks. I mean, if you look, those pad, those those locations are almost directly in front of each of the houses, which makes me think. There's some service line issues going on.
What about Fish Gill, if that was on the slate for last year, is it off because of the drainage issues?
Fish Gill is off for them, for chips right now, because. Um, it was identified, elements of it were identified as damage areas by FEMA. And it is a potential, Mountain Avenue is a potential resolution pathway for rerouting. The water coming on Cedar Street and going under private property, so the engineers have taken a light touch approach. And as this develops, as this develops, I'll have them come in and say this in their words. But they've taken a light touch approach to the to the intersection of Fish Gill and. Mountain, because they don't wanna put in place things that we later have to go back and undo.
Got it.
So it is, it is, it is a low number, it's like seventy thousand dollars, and it's it's low level, what do we need to do? To get us through until we have those larger engineering question answers, questions answered. So that's why I would look to other alternatives, I don't know if anybody has other ideas, those are my two thoughts for for what would be solid chips projects.
So I guess it's it's coming back to the engineers on capacity first, and then deciding the projects and.
Yeah, but it's just growing out. Yeah, that's that's what I think, that it would be, it would be one, just like Garden Street was, the chips project for the year. But also, we we have an opportunity here, since there is so much chips money. Saved, that we have the potential to do things really well in one location, right?
Well, I guess that then the question would be a testament of like, what needs it the most, like, if Fair Street looks like it's gonna collapse, then. Maybe that's the one, but like, Main Street's a mess, there are so many streets that need, that need attention, that it's hard to pick, but I would say.
We also need to, somebody would need to understand chips and the guidelines and what it entails. I've heard Main Street and Fair Street thrown out, the Main Street and Fair Street are now classified as different types of streets. Will Main Street and Fair Street actually qualify for chips?
Oh, that's true.
I don't know.
Yeah, we need to find that, that answer, and that is that they are eligible for federal highway.
So.
They're eligible for emergency funding from federal highway, I don't know how it shifts chips, sorry, Aaron.
Okay, no, it's fine, um, so my understanding at this point in the process, we don't have to pick a project, we just.
No, no, I'm just throwing out so we can get a sense of of capacity and scale, are we looking at, you know, a tiny thing, or are we looking at a bigger thing? I think, I was just trying to get a sense of what people's general.
I would, I would like to have a sense of when we start working on this project, if we do choose to include it in the project, like, what month would we? Begin to approach this?
It would be probably next spring, because it would have to be engineered and bid. And we'd have to probably in some locations, survey to determine what the village owns and what someone else owns, I mean, Fair Street, excuse me, Fish Gill. It it needed first. A a full survey to determine what parts of the roadbed we actually owned, you know, along the sides of the road. And then it was camera, using cameras like we're doing on Cedar Street to determine where the where the problems were underground. So that's a process, then engineering out is a process, then going to bid is a process, I don't see it happening. Anytime before this spring. I mean, also, we've gotta deal with weather, right? And when when downtime is ideally with a road like, like Fair Street, you wanna time it for when it's lower usage.
Are all those costs included in chips, or do we need, if we're gonna do a chips project, do we have to plan for? Other costs as a cover engineering?
It depends on, chips is really complicated, and I think we would, we would rely on. Han to help guide us with, can we pull in sidewalks here, can we not, is engineering?
Typically, engineering is paid for after the fact, if the project becomes chips eligible. So you can't just submit engineering to chips, you can submit it for chips after the construction is deemed eligible.
Okay, so.
But cambering, probably not.
Just for like the budget, if we put this in, then there may be other costs that we have to.
So there are engineering costs in the budget, um. You know, so we're almost at the expenses, there's just one more line to touch on, um, chips isn't gonna be solved today. No, so, and I think we have to assume that our engineering budget is gonna get chewed up in other locations.
So fund balance, right now, the only contributions from fund balance. Um, I pulled out the Kenworth Dump Truck Payment Number Three, which is thirty eight thousand. Um, the request for a Department of State Consolidation Study Grant, twelve thousand five hundred is the village's match share. It's a one-time study, um, the dump truck, although it's multiple payments. One could argue that it's a one-time payment, because we have paid for one-time vehicles out of fund balance as a whole. Um, so I'm okay moving that payment to fund balance, I think we just took, we borrowed on it for the flexibility, even though we didn't have to, their interest rates were low at the time. Um, fifty eight hundred dollars for a heavy duty pressure washer requested by the Highway Department. Um, and then other than that, um, it's usually, we pick a number that the board is comfortable with on village-wide projects. That the board wants to address, not necessarily naming the projects, but we're willing to figure out what we can spend in two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. Um, in the past, it's been roughly three hundred, and then anything over three hundred has been for. You know, stuff that we already knew about, not just like, hey, we need to do this kind of project, it'd be for like these one-time payments that have already been established. Um, so that's not in here, also, what sometimes is pulled out of operating to balance a budget and paid for by fund balance. Um, would be sidewalks and storm drains, and you can argue that either way, you know, sidewalks should be a recurring operating expense, we should be. Doing concrete, you know, but if you're going to have a vendor or contractor come in and do it, like we had, then, you know, that's a bigger project. Um, you know, so if we need to balance the budget, there's some wiggle room on those things. The the thing about fund balance for village-wide projects, it's a net zero, so if we allocate hundred, two hundred. I just put in expense on village-wide repairs, it's the other items, as we go through the expenses, are there things that we can pull out? That would increase the revenue to balance the expense. As one-time items, as we go through it, currently, um, as of the audit, fund balance and general fund is one point four million. I don't anticipate any increases this year, um, as there have been in the past.
Um, just one note on your last item, given what we've seen over the last year. I wouldn't, I wouldn't back off storm drains, there, we do have the possibility. Equipment sharing with the county now, they told us to contact them for their tractor truck before we rent every time, to see if theirs is available, but. Who knows what's gonna happen in the next, in the next year with storms.
Moving on to expenses. I think expenses, we'll talk about in more broad terms, department by department, um, the way that the budget is structured. There are thick gridlines that subtotal departments. As mentioned previously, few overarching, um, expense items. Uh, salaries is the biggest one, um, so for this iteration of the budget, it assumes. A two percent placeholder for raises for all staff, both contract and non-contract. Anyone that's employed by the village, two percent, placeholder, the village board will have to have an executive, executive session to decide. What they're actually going to do, but it's at least something in here, we could take it out, we can increase whatever. Um, the village board and the justice, so those are salaried, stipend type things, they're paid once a month, those are remain unchanged. So it's just the hourly, that have that two percent, and if an hourly person also gets a stipend, the stipend remains unchanged. We, in this budget, replace one part-time office staff with one full-time office staff. And add a full-time highway CDL labor, um, the last. I took the wage of the last person hired by the department, added the two dollars for the CDL, assuming they would come in with a CDL. Um, and that rate's built in. Utilities, um. They're very unpredictable, um, heating oil has come down a little bit in price per gallon, not so much usage. Um, electric. So we have the CCA on some accounts, unknown supply, I mean, and delivery, supply for the. Non-CCA and the delivery, Central Hudson is all over the place, depending on the month. Um, it's really hard to protect, predict electricity, so I kinda have it based on where we were last year. Um, we also have solar that gives us ten percent, estimated ten percent off on certain accounts. I used to be able to track a spreadsheet, every kilowatt, every price, I can't do that with all the different moving parts now. Like, it's not just one consolidating Central Hudson bill anymore, um. So those, if you see some of those numbers being the exact same as last year's budget, which is something I don't usually do, it's because it's the best thing that I have to go off of. Unless I knew for sure that there's a change. Um, the streetlights, I changed because the majority of the bill is actually rent, not usage. Um, so once I made that adjustment, it comes down, it's the only utility that really has savings. Um, gas usage is the same, and then the price per gallon has come down. And I also think that Phillips Towns rate is slightly better than the rate that we were getting on gas prices. It's a cost savings, a slight cost savings, but still one. Alright, so, department by department, border trustees, no change. Village Court Justice, only change is the salary, two percent, um, no change in the mayor. The auditor, um, the auditor. The auditor, um, the auditors have been good to us in their pricing. But they have expressed that the industry is going up and that our payments are under where they would be charging new clients. It is also probably about time to RFP for this, um. But, given unknowns, I updated the audit from seventy-five hundred to eleven thousand, um, be. Because I have seen what they charge new clients, and if we're going somewhere else, you'd have to assume that they would also be higher, um. EFPR might be come back at the lowest, that's why we went with them, um, strictly on pricing last time.
Um, and that was how long ago?
Last, well, last year was a one-year.
It was a one-year extension. Um, so it's been at seven years. The, you're allowed to have. A partner for five years, like an engagement partner, so although we have had the same company. The, the sign-off person changes every five years, um, so that there's no conflict like the person reviewing the fieldwork. Um, cause I've spoken to our orders about that, so if they do end up winning or coming in at lowest price, we don't have to. Stay known to them just because we've had them in the past, but we could too because of professional service, um. Also, every two years, I have to pay twenty-eight hundred dollars for a GASV program, which is an auditing program for the audit. It's a two-year license, so there, that's the trend in accounting contractual, it was forty-eight hundred to two thousand, back up to forty-eight hundred. Budget notices, um, the same, it also includes anything that has the house, it's like the other notices. Village clerk, um, it's just moving some funds around, um. You know, the deputy clerk. Has its own line as it should instead of being insured services, um, so you'll see a decrease in shared services and an increase in deputy clerk. There's change in the overall, um. Personal services between them. But, for the website, Laura, you hadn't talked about changing the website for like eight hundred and twelve dollars, is that something we're gonna do or can we take that out?
I have no idea anymore, so I would say, sure, take it out. They did add a, right, we signed a contract with a not insignificant. Increase, and that's included here.
The, yes, the increase and they upped this like eight percent last time, so I did a ten percent increase. Um, and then I did the eight hundred, so I could take the eight hundred out.
Was the eight hundred four? They made the, remember we were. Some kind of upgrade, I actually got an email today that they are doing this dreadful upgrade and. We'll look different, something, um, I haven't heard about cost difference, but they, but in that contract, they. Promised some F-wise increase, so we know how much it will be.
Oh, they did?
They did, I just have, I don't remember what it was.
Attorney, the attorneys are going up eleven and a half percent effective June first, the per hourly rate. To, it's hard to predict the hours that you need an attorney. Right now, the cost is averaging eight thousand a month for this fiscal year, so if we take eight thousand up at eleven and a half percent. We get a hundred and seven thousand, that's why there's a significant increase.
They had not increased. Um, they had not increased the hourly amount. In a number of years, correct? This was a correction, not a correction, but a, a catch, sort of catch-up increase, is that right?
I think it was two or three years ago.
Like an understanding, besides the increase in the rates, it's, it's almost double what it was last year. Why, why the increase, I assume the hours that we use attorneys?
We needed them, we needed them heavily engaged in the code update, and then, um.
No code update, attorney fees would have sat in a different line, we went from fifty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand. Um, in part mostly because, well, the Article seventy-eight that came out of that, that would be here. Um, the reliance on professional services has increased. And then now it doubles from those two years ago because you have the increase in hours plus eleven and a half percent rate hike.
But, I would say, I mean, my view, others may feel differently, my view is, view is, we have not drawn upon, the village has not drawn upon expertise. As much as it should have, and a chunk of the problems that we end up dealing with. Um, are, have been created by not having it done right the first time. I don't know if others.
The town board has an attorney all the time, right, and no, nobody here is a lawyer. So I think that it's pretty important that we provide that, that to our board to make sure that we're doing things right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not crazy about the eleven. Percent increase, it feels like.
Oh, we can, we can also, we have the opportunity, it's another one, we have the opportunity to RFP. We stay, we made the decision to stay with, um. Continue man and CMR rider. Um, because in a time of transition with major projects. Shifting from one administration to the next, there was a three-thread of knowledge, um. If you, if folks are feeling like we want to bid it again, I will say Nelsonville did recently do an RFP for their village attorney fee, for their village attorney. Um, and then, and the numbers were comparable, um, so I don't know how much that would go down, and I. I do think there's something to be said for experience, given everything that we're.
Just, I, I just feel like the, the more we use. A vendor, the, maybe the less they charge, and they're instead increasing fees eleven percent, it just seems somewhat counterintuitive.
Well, they, as I said, they hadn't increased fees. They hadn't increased fees in a couple of years, I have to say, I was not happy about the way CMR made this change. Right, we signed our, we signed the contract for the next year, and then what was it, two weeks later? Not even, he informed us that the rates would be going up. Could that have been, he, but John traveled a lot in the spring. He was doing a million things, could he, could it have slipped his mind, maybe, but I think it was kinda, you know, I, I, I'm not happy about that. There, there are plenty of support staff at CMR that could have communicated to us before we signed the contract.
And we didn't sign the contract for a certain, with fees associated with it.
We signed the contract at an, at an hourly rate, yes, and then were informed, my, uh, answer is correctly?
Well, we signed with the engagement letter.
Engagement letter.
Engagement letter. Alright, so it didn't have a contract, the contract came after the engagement letter, so.
It wasn't even a contract, it was, it was a memo that the rates were going up.
Yeah.
After we signed.
After we agreed to engage and continue services, then the letter came.
Yeah, I, my understanding is an engagement letter is not necessarily, doesn't tie us into anything, it's, we can.
No, no, no. I mean, I, I will say now are the service that we're getting from them, there are now. Different attorneys working at lesser rates. Right, Jonathan, who's working with our boards more directly now. Jeff period, Jeff Scully periodically leans in on contracts. We are getting char, and, and where, where he can assign us. Um, paralegals to save us money, he has been doing that, we've just had, uh, we've had a big load of legal need. In the last year, I mean, look, this is part of doing businesses in municipality. You need legal advice, and if we're not so far off. Other municipalities, it's, it's a greater amount for the village, but we're not so far off other municipalities of our size.
Right, but, but with me as the exception, I see. An administration that gains a lot more experience over the years and, and perhaps. Can rely slightly less on their own experience and not attorneys.
You cut out, you cut out, could, could you say that again? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I think he's saying that we have more experience excluding her. I don't think that any of us are lawyers or play lawyers on TV, so I wouldn't.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear Erin, so I don't know what his point is, can you say it again?
Well, just that, yes, with, with, uh, Tweeps was saying, and, and that we, um. You know, maybe can rely slightly less on some of the attorneys because we have more experience as a board.
And I think generally, that's a good concept, but I can't defend an Article seventy-eight proceeding, can you?
No, I don't want to.
I mean, I'm just saying, the, it's, in matters like, in matters related to law. I, we've seen the result of, I can do this better myself.
Yes.
Over, over a, a, a six-year period.
No, I, I don't think we're gonna solve this tonight, even if we RFP it, um, it's still gonna be a cost.
Yep.
And what we can do is, if the board wants, try and be more conscious about the hours. But given the increase in trends and budgeting is trends, um. I'm not comfortable right now lowering it.
I'm not either.
Engineering, um. Twenty-five thousand dollars, it's the same as last year, I don't know how to budget for an engineer cost, um. And then it's thirty-seven-five because of the twelve-five Department of State grant funded from fund balance. So twenty-five thousand in engineering, could move some more of that to fund balance, should it be higher, should it be lower? Um, it's hard to gauge, we have to remember that water. Stuff is paid for by the Water Fund and ARPA, um, for the water filters. And so this would strictly be highway and general fund items.
And, right, well, if we, so if we are able to get a grant this summer. For planning for stormwater and it's a fifty-thousand-dollar grant with a fifteen percent match, then we need to come up with fifteen thousand dollars. Match, right, and so like. And, and I hope that.
Um, also, for the grant though. Um, you would also need an stamped engineering report to apply for the grant, is that something that would then become reimbursable if you're awarded the grant? Or that's, I think that might be prep work that, so it's not just seventy-five hundred.
The, no, I don't think you need a stamp engineering report for a planning grant.
Okay.
Right, like I think that's to create. But, but I guess just the point of like, if we're able to get some of these grants, which I hope we are, there are, um. Uh, matches.
Well, I, I, given everything we are facing from an infrastructure perspective. And things breaking every day. I would not, I personally don't feel comfortable going down on engineering, I think, Michelle, your, your choice to add is, is the right one. Um, this, it's the same concept with attorneys, we worked without them on a regular basis for a long time and we're paying for it.
I, I guess I meant, does it need to be higher? Or can we get a fund balance for, for like a, if it's a one-time match?
Okay. I'm sorry, Laura, I thought you were arguing that.
No, no. No, I'm not.
Um, I support the engineering, uh, praise, I think, I think that. This is a really important piece of what we're doing going forward, so I think we should continue.
Records management, um, this is thirty-seven hundred because it's an assumption of thirty-three hundred for E-code. Um, it's been a wish list item that should be done. Um, with the, now that the code is done, that was the whole holdup. Um, so now it's appropriate to be in the budget for next year now that the code's done.
What I don't have a sense of, because it's been so long since we talked about E-code as a, as a municipality. How much, how much work is on our side and how much work is on E-code's side?
It shifts from us to them.
And if they do the actual upload, et cetera, what do we give them in, in order to get the product that. Is so fantastic and so much more user-friendly, in other words, when you go to another municipality's website and you click through their code. You can click through sections and get exactly what you're looking for rather than digging through a PDF. Um, so, go ahead.
Wait, E-code, E-code takes our existing code, which they would take from our website, and they also, and they scrub the data with. Every law we've submitted to. The, the Hut Department of State, Secretary of State. So they have all the latest updates from there. So, yeah, so their, their program, they have a set, like searching through PDF files.
No, but I mean, the actual work of getting it into E-code. They take it, they take the product, it's not us struggling to get it into E-code.
Probably done by AI.
I, I'm sure that's the case, um, uh, if we, it's a place that we can. I mean, obviously, it's a place that can go, it's not essential, but if we can provide that service. To the public by making our code more navigable, I'd love to be able to do that.
So this is, the, is this for the work to be done, or is this the contract to have?
Three-year contract to have it done. You know, the quote probably needs to be updated at this point, that's what they were, the last two times we went to them, they were proposing. A three-year contract or a three installment, um, which would have been three years. You know, now that the code is formatted a little nicer, it might be cheaper, it might be more because of more, you know, but this is the number that we have to go on.
Can, can we, um, go down with that?
If it's an on, ongoing, like a maintenance, no, if they.
Contract, do this much every year, or is that just to get?
It was for the first three years, and then I, that included work, and I don't know if there's reoccurring to maintain it.
That number's at least, at least three years old at this point.
Right.
Um. Yeah, so that needs to be updated.
There are services, we talked about salary changes. Computer software. Yep, I pulled out Granicus, which is fifteen thousand eight hundred for last year's budget. Um, and that's why it dropped from eighteen thousand last year to eight hundred, eight thousand this year. Computer support went up a little bit, um, because of the ongoing maintenance for Village Hall upgrades. I'm sorry, that's in technology. Um, computer support, um, went up because we added more devices to our managed technology contract. And then the fifty-two hundred includes, um, service fees for the Village Hall upgrades and potentially for the MTA tunnel. To have a maintenance plan for the camera there, if that's done, if not, that's seventeen hundred that could come out if. The board is not going to do a camera.
So we had a large, we had a, a plus. A year ago, give us numbers for all the municipal buildings, we pulled out Village Hall. To address the security needs that we had in a, in a very real way this year, um. In terms of outdoor areas, we had them budget, not budget, but we had them bid. Um, or propose, upgraded Mayor's Park, upgraded the waterfront. Dockside, you know, the fan stand area and the tunnel. Um. I think, you have pulled out those two, the parks, right, and that, what remains is the tunnel. Um, others may feel differently, I feel like the tunnel is a place both for, on green graffiti, although we can admit we are, we're better able to. Address the graffiti now, it's still happening. Um, and it's also a blind spot, it's a blind spot for safety, if anything happens to anybody down there, we have no, we have no record of what happened underneath. So that's my feeling, others may feel differently, uh, I, if we need to pull it, we can, there hasn't been a camera before, but I think there should be one.
Um, I think that, you know, if, if we're getting the power washer, which will address the graffiti problem. That's the biggest problem that I see down there, and. If we do fund the power washer, that problem should be addressed, because me and the guys are pretty good at cleaning up real fast. Um, I think in terms of blind spots, it's kind of like you can plan for every emergency that could possibly happen, but. There isn't like a record of bad things happening down there that I know of, is there?
No.
Not, not the data that I have, has anything major, don't have, except for the graffiti.
Right, so I, I, it's not a safety issue then, so I don't think that. Like, any, any service like that we add will increase the cost of fees all the time, so I would rather. Leave them out just to keep our budget neater.
Others?
Two major issues from last, and I'm, I'm sure Bob will agree with me, is graffiti, and for a while, they were, they were smashing the windows. On this side, but more on the down, on the southbound side that we're responsible for, but that hasn't happened in a while. Yeah, if you go. You go around to the southbound platform, the windows that look.
You are right, that is not, it's not an ongoing problem, it's, I think it's a wish list, we haven't heard from Tweeps or Erin.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm worried about this year's budget with wishlist items.
Yeah, okay, well, we can pull it.
Uh, that's a little bit tough on, cause I, I can, I hear both sides, you know, like. It hasn't been an issue, but God forbid that time that it is, you know, that's a person's. life or whatever it is, you know, I, I, it, we can't plan for it, I agree, but I mean graffiti to me is one issue. Life, life safety is like a completely different issue to me. But so that's not an answer. I don't know. I'm not sure about this one. This one is a tough one.
Thoughts from you? There is a camera up at the visitor center, so at the east entrance of the tunnel, there is a camera.
Does not give us clear view of faces or anything like that. It's got, but something did happen again. I'm always doing with a little guy, as you all know. Uh, you know, it's hard. It's hard because again, a life is a life and I agree, I don't agree with you. Uh, but again, looking, looking at, if you're just gonna go specific or everybody who looks at is the data. The data doesn't call for any, thank God, no, no major incidents down there, but I don't want to be that first one.
We're encouraging people to park in the Metro North lot. Um, so there, you could imagine that there'd be more usage of the tunnel at night than have otherwise. On, on their up and over, on the over paths. I, I mean. Yeah, that's perspective.
You're more in line.
I feel like the E-code, sorry to like go back, but that would, that would not be high on my list to keep, I think like Control F does a pretty good job. Uh, so.
Through a PDF, does it work?
To search, yeah.
Not getting camera, is that, is that your point?
Yeah, I mean, like public safety over like ease of using a PDF, like, I don't know. Uh, yes, I think that's my perspective.
Well, that's an interesting perspective. It's, it's a lesser expense. I don't actually know the numbers. I don't know how much.
And our, and our E-code is.
We're adding more numbers to the budget that roll forward forever.
The camera itself isn't that expensive. It's the maintaining.
Quick, quick point, just to throw out there, because we'll try to save money and I understand that. I don't know how much it would cost, where we can make it a lot brighter. More light lighting.
Light is always a good deterrent of crime, for sure. That's really smart. I like that idea.
We can put lights in the.
I don't know that answer. That's just, we're looking for.
According to the contract, the village is responsible for lighting in the tunnel. There's so many things we're responsible for in that damn tunnel.
But again, be, be also on the other end, the more you light it, somebody goes down there. It has to be protected.
But you can add lighting, that's a great idea.
I mean, Laura, to your point about, I'm comfortable with that, if others are comfortable with that, pulling, pulling that camera at this time. I hope we don't have to regret it. The, but the question of E-code, you're absolutely right. It's not an essential upgrade. It, at some point, it would be very helpful to people, people doing projects in the village to be able to, it's so frustrating to try to find a way, especially the zoning code. But it is not a necessary thing at this stage. So that's, that's a three thousand dollar call, right, roughly. How others feel about that? Everyone, here's how this works. Does, do others feel comfortable pulling that?
Yeah.
As non-essential as share?
Sure, I mean, it, it shouldn't happen. This is like, you know, basics public service, like we shouldn't be in this stone age with that stuff.
It's, it's, I think to say control, you know, function of Control F simplifying it. Because it's much more than that. It's about keeping our code update current and accessible.
So less, for you, for your thinking about it less from a user perspective than you are thinking about it as a, a clerical legal function. That's a fair point.
From that, from the village's perspective is, and as you talked about earlier, that you want to bundle with the short-term rentals and occupancy tax, other up code updates. When you work with an E-code, it makes it that, that much easier. Also, when you're applying to E-code, as we're doing occupancy tax.
Yeah.
Where you can pick up the phones and hey, Terry, can you tell me, give me what you have on file for other municipalities.
Uh, okay, alright.
It's not just about making it user-friendly, there's value the village and.
I was just gonna say, there is also, not for nothing, time savings, you know, doing research in other municipalities to formulate some of our codes. It's just like, crushes time.
Okay, but the, but we get back to the original issue, which is that we don't even know if this number is.
Let's see if we can make E-code a one-time payment out of fund balance, see what the reoccurring is, and then, you know, that could be a valid one-time get going. You know, the payment plan might have been because we were tight. If we allocate, say roughly ten to twelve thousand to get it up off the ground and it's twelve hundred reoccurring, then it meets everybody in the middle on the recurring cost of the budget.
In the meantime. Yes, in the meantime.
Unallocated insurance is liability insurance. Liability insurance rates are not available yet. It's still kind of early. We have been seeing, as with most types of insurance, we know, not just for the village, but in the market, car insurance, all those things go up. I'm sorry, fifteen percent in here could potentially be a cost savings. If it's less than a fifteen percent increase, but it was, you know, near ten to ten percent last year, plus the cyber liability insurance. Went up a couple thousand, you know, so excluding that from the percentage. Um, I think fifteen percent is fair, um but it is a big number.
Michelle, is that why we're over budget this year? Because we estimated in the budget and went up more?
Cyber liability, cyber insurance was four thousand and it used to be part of our entire package. So it came out of the package without the package going down and now sits on top as a additional rider.
Thanks.
Hey, Police Department. Although the PBA contracted being negotiated, as we've talked, all salaries have a two percent placeholder right now. Um, no changes in the days requested. Right now, the days requested have walking tours for all of C-streak, plus an additional roughly the extra walking tours. Um, so that might be a place where they could be used over the summer. Officer in charge has expressed concern over the summer that walking tours may be needed. With C-streak, it's almost a non-negotiable.
We charge that back with C-streak.
It's built into the contract now.
Yeah, we don't charge it back.
No, oh, not charging back, but I mean, we include that cost within the contract so that they're covering.
The linear feet includes some kind of.
The calculation includes it.
Yeah, calculation go up if the contract and PBA goes up correctly.
We're negotiating, if we're negotiating with C-streak, we should accommodate for staffing costs.
We just changed the dock rates last year and the fee schedule.
Right, so we're gonna change the schedule, three percent or eight percent or whatever it is to.
In the past, C-streak was charged a linear foot, plus a porter potty, plus the officer working at an average rate. Um, it was very compartmentalized. The shift was you charge a higher per linear foot and it encompasses everything and we don't charge back itemized, is what it is. So there are thirty-seven walking tours in the budget. If C-streak is here, um, you need twenty-eight if they're here from September first through November tenth. Um, so if we took those eight walking tours out, you know, it's roughly three hundred, so three times eight, it's twenty-four hundred. But now C-streak comes in August. You know, so it's, it's a little dependent on it. You know, for some cost savings, maybe we can meet in the middle and take out four walking tours for now. And then that's a twelve hundred dollar estimated saving.
The only stipulation I'm show, I would like to get a second possible uh parking enforcement.
Everything else that's goes into the police calculations is mostly contract-based, the training days, the courts, details. Um, so we have the walking tours, we have the details for holidays, parade, things like that. Um, and a little bit of admin to finish the Lexi pole. Otherwise, there is no extra tours in there, um other than the walking. That's the one flexibility. Everything else is contract-based. To Laura's point, parking enforcement officer. In the budget, there is the current parking enforcement officer. His rate assumed that he would work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all year round, fifty-two weeks even in the winter. And then an additional parking enforcement officer for half the year on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So it's one and a half staff members. Um, last year, it was budgeted for two full-time, well, full-time like from April to December for Saturday and Sunday. So now we increased Friday, um increased all year round. And, but lowered that second person to halftime. You know, only during busy season, you'd have two people.
So if we have two people at those times, shouldn't we recalculate how many tickets we're getting? Because if you have two guys making tickets versus one, wouldn't it do, give you more tickets?
I wouldn't do that because you, you, that's not a, not a guarantee. So you're putting, you're putting a number and a certain amount of tickets that you think you're gonna get. Again, this is me, me talking. Can't have that to the budget. That, that has, that would have to be an extra. It's not even like a higher second one. Right now, we have one that's, he's been great and he wanted to work the whole year, so we kept him on to do that.
But if we don't get the second officer, then we won't be spending that money and we won't be making the money either. So it will kind of flatten out.
I mean, I really hope that we can, I know Larry's been reaching out to the, um, to the officer who oversees the cadets. I really hope, I think we're gonna need the feet on the ground.
Yeah, for sure.
I really hope we can find someone.
I think it's important to have a second officer.
I'm, I'm pushing the best I can for somebody who wants to do it now.
But I think in terms of balancing the budget, if we're budgeting in for the second officer, we should budget in for tickets from the second officer and that would give you a balanced budget, no?
If you're assuming non-compliance, yes.
They, given what we saw last fall.
How you guys doing out there?
Wait, there are people in the audience?
Yes, there are.
They're asleep, but.
Rebecca's smiling.
Thank you. I like the budget. Anyway, I like the numbers. I don't like the discussion. Moving on. Where are we now? Uh, still Police Department as a whole. There is some savings originally when the CAD system and the radios rolled out. We weren't sure what portions we were going to have to pay licensing and stuff. The county ended up picking up more than anticipated. So that's why in police, um telephone and radio from the current year to the proposed next year is a decrease.
Which line is that? Oh, telephone and radio, I got it, yep.
Most of the other lines pretty much stay the same from Police Department. Traffic signs.
Um, device support is the handhelds mostly, right?
It is completely handheld. That's the cost, seventy-six hundred to have two mobile handheld um enforcement devices.
On clothing? Yes, it seems like we have I mean, maybe it's because of where we are. Well, no, we're looking at actuals here. It seems like where their offices aren't, they're rarely using the full allotment. I mean, I suppose the money has to be there if someone needs new equipment.
Um, correct. Um, you will see some people purchase in April and May. You'll also see some officers that are newer to Cold Spring will have higher amounts because they're buying more uniforms and things like that. Officers that have been here for a while may not be changing their uniforms and they're only using it as a act needed. Um, whereas a newly hired officer is more need because new patches, new colors, new everything. It's unpredictable, but it's contractual in the PBA contract, so it's in the budget. They have the right to spend it.
Right, okay. So Kane, Kane has, this one has dropped, one has dropped off, two have dropped.
There's sixteen lines, there's fifteen officers. And then there's usually turnover within the year, so. New officers are entitled to seven hundred their first year, then six fifty, then it drops down to six hundred. Water control signs, street signs. I hope the street signs are complete, but I know that they won't be. Um, the past two years, we spent roughly eighty-five hundred. So I cut that in half. I can't see us buying that many more poles and signs, but I don't know. I'm looking at you because you do most of the signs.
Alright, so next year, I think, you know, this, this coming year, we're gonna be assessing how things go, right? So it's gonna take us probably more than six months to assess it, to have those conversations, to collect the data. I don't think that we'll be doing major changes. I mean, maybe we'll get some parking meters down at Hudson Hill, or Hudson Lot, the Hudson House Lot, but like, other than that, I don't, what?
Or other further up at main.
Right, but I don't see us doing a whole lot of changes.
Are all the signs for the residential permit purchased, for the residential portion of this?
Those are all purchased and up, and if we did decide to change it so that the residents have seven days a week, we have those signs purchased, that we changed our plan midway through.
Yeah.
And we've already purchased the plans, the signs, so we have those signs done backups. So.
So this forty-two hundred might actually be too high. It, it's usually never this high. It's just because we've been doing.
I would say we're not gonna do a whole lot of signs for the next year.
Maybe the only thing that would, that would drive that scale of sign buying is if we were to expand up into the other district and there's larger conversations we need to have before we're ready to do that.
We have a parking committee work for like two years before we came up with our current plan. So I would assume that we need to have that kind of.
Not rushing.
Yeah.
Planning any direct, like, signs to direct people to park at Metro North or like other ways?
We have those signs. We just need to go up and you've got to be about it, but we have those signs. We are well signed for what the conditions are right now. Um, and any changes that go into the future, I don't see happening in the next budget cycle.
Okay, yeah, I'll cut it in half. On street parking, um, this is directly tied to revenue, so it's twelve percent of the main street revenue. It's the average of the transaction fees and the credit card fees. Every credit card and every brand, you know, you can have fifty-five different charges for a Visa, so it's hard to really but on average, the past two years with Park Mobile, it averages a twelve percent. Not a hundred percent sure what that price will look like with the kiosks if they pay in a kiosk. But even with the kiosk there, they still have the option to pay on Park Mobile. And I'm assuming that they would, um, so I'm going to use that twelve percent both here and at the lots um for Park Mobile.
This number will be adjusted based on the.
Yes, it's directly tied to it, so whatever I drop the revenue by, this'll come down. Fire department.
Just saying, we will have a small additional revenue of the chargers once this time we go up. But I think it will be quite small and I don't think we should count on it, so. And it seems like it can add to this in that area.
Fire department, um, no significant changes here.
This, we have to have this conversation after years and years and no one wants to have the conversation, but I'm gonna have.
Not tonight, no, please.
We don't, it doesn't need to be a, be a debate, but I'm pointing out, we have fourteen hundred dollars budgeted for.
In total, it's, the siren is sixty dollars a month. So six times twelve. This also includes, although probably shouldn't be in the siren line, it's always been in the siren line, is building alarms for the fire department. So fourteen hundred is not just the.
So can we get that breakout on that one? Because.
Sixty dollars a month for the siren times twelve months.
There you go, thank you. So that's seven hundred and twenty dollars. I mean, we're paying for, we're paying for what is a non-operational object.
Okay, let's pull the board. Are we shutting the siren? Okay, let's pull the board. Are we shutting the siren? Aaron, yes or no?
Are we wet the siren?
Getting rid of the fire siren. Paying the electricity for a fire siren that has not rung in years and they all get notifications on their cell phones and on their.
I'd like to be the last to vote on this one, I'm sorry.
Take it out of the budget, seven twenty tweaks. Kathleen? Laura?
I mean, as long as like, feel like. There's no public safety, no one is.
The fire because the siren has not rung. It hasn't worked. It didn't work for years and we don't, okay, and we have an alternative system.
They get paged, they have their pagers, they get, I am responding on their cell phones. If you'd like to ask them a question about how how he's.
How would you vote?
You have pagers, we have IMR, sometimes the CAD system goes down and we have to rely on other things. We have a siren up in North Highland that's been running since I joined twelve years ago. And it goes, it does not go off every time, there are some issues again with it getting, but ninety-nine, ten of times it goes off.
It goes off, but there's.
Accident, fire, anytime nine-one-one's called, nine-one, 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 nine-one-one goes through and it trips it and it's supposed to go off.
But I guess the other point maybe to make is that just because we're turning off the electricity, doesn't mean that if we decided to fix the siren, we reactivate it. But there's no sense in paying the electricity while, so with that logic, then I.
I didn't hear Laura's comment, my apologies.
My comment was, we shouldn't be paying the electricity while it's broken. And so if we then fix it, then we can pay the electricity. This isn't, we are not ending the siren for all time by turning off the electricity.
It's it's fine, I just feel like this is a budget conversation and what we're talking about is a conversation about whether we end the electricity or not, that's a different.
I'm talking about the payment.
That's fine.
Something we don't use.
That's great, seven hundred dollars, I don't wanna have a long conversation, so whatever.
The building inspector department, this is contractual, Phillips Town, the revenue is estimated to match. The sixteen hundred dollars a month that we currently pay Phillips Town, I don't anticipate that changing. Vital stats, no changes, highway department, significant changes in adding that additional laborer. There's four thousand roughly for rental of a fence for Fair Street. Equipment repairs. Have been high, continue to be high, and so I budgeted more. It was twelve thousand, spent eighteen, went down to six, spent ten, and we're not even through the year yet, so I bumped it up to twelve. Hoping that twelve is enough. Supplies and materials also. It mostly bumped up for the fence and I bumped it up an extra two supplies and materials of the stuff that they need day to day to work. So then coming back now to the biggest thing in the highway department, when we talk about personal services in the highway department, we're looking at the highway department. Sidewalks, storm drains, street cleaning and snow removal. When you put all of those together, which is why I've broken out a separate sheet for some of us, I sent late. We look at the department, highway, the highway department budget as a whole for all of those. But it does include one summer help person, the part-time laborer we have now, the three full-time staff we have now. And a new full-time CDL laborer. That full-time CDL laborer, if we are dropping. A significant amount of revenue and the ba- budget is already unbalanced, that is the biggest add to the budget. And could be the easiest to pull out. Feelings, thoughts on that?
Well, when we met with Budgie, he wanted the full time, but he also said that it would be super helpful to have like. A part-time with expertise. And we said, well, that's harder to get at the price that we pay. But if you had somebody who had carpentry experience and contracting experience and you paid them the right price, like maybe thirty dollars an hour. But they were only part-time, we're not paying for the health insurance, we're not paying for their benefits. But we have somebody who has expertise that Budgie doesn't have to handhold, who he can say, go fix the roof.
I think that person's the unicorn. Honestly, it's very hard to find people to do that work. We we are so lucky to have Mo. He's unusual. It's it's historically been very difficult to get people part-time. And I think, I mean, I I understand the logic behind going to thirty, but I, you know, going up. But I think that disparity is too much from our existing part-time staff. I think that you can, you you open your potential with raising the salary and I'm not opposed to that position. If we were to get someone with expertise recogn- recognizing that capacity with a dollar award. But I don't think it should be a big gulf between. The standing staff and that part-time person.
We have a couple of questions, the, what is, what's the start date you're assuming, Michelle, for the new labor?
You first.
Okay, so it'd be a full fiscal year person, right?
Yep, so benefits, the budget, realistic budget, not just, you know, the forty hours a week, the overtime, snow, the whole nine yards spike.
Okay, but this is dependent in large part to whatever assumptions we make about parking revenue, right? And so at at some point, we will have confidence we're making more or less than we're budgeting. What I don't know about this process is if we say leave out this position, what does it take to add in the position? Belatedly in the fiscal year or vice versa, what if we, you know, put it in before a later start date perhaps? And realize that we have to cut it from the budget, what's the process of making those changes?
So to add in large expenses midway through the fiscal year. So halfway through, it's still gonna be a fifty thousand dollar, you know, expense. So to be able to do that halfway through the year, we have to make sure that our revenue projections are net fifty thousand over. So parking, you know, worst case scenario, parking comes in great, it's fifty thousand over. One might assume, great, now we can pay that fifty thousand in labor. But now, hey, our boat club lease, just saying, falls through or something, that's twelve thousand, just we lost. Hudson House falls through, that's fifty-five hundred, you have to look at it net. Possible. Hard, but possible.
I I mean, I I see the point that you're making though, Erin, of. We feel, start to feel confident in these new revenue streams, then we can add something. You know, then we feel better about adding something to the.
The other, sorry.
No, it's just that they, but this isn't a one-time expense, right? This would be someone who then we will want. We want them to stay and so it's a.
The revenue is going up, you'd assume that, you know, from the parking that it's doing better than we assumed that it's going to be recurring. However, that bottom line number of the budget, like we said, to go above expenses bottom line is a comptroller adjustment to the budget. So if we have fifty thousand dollars in savings somewhere else in a line that we're not using and that revenue is over. That expense can't go fifty thousand dollars over just because the revenue came in without going to the comptroller for an adjustment and justifying it. Never done it before, don't know if it's difficult or not, but I do know it's not something that we could just do here.
So can I phrase this a different way to make sure I'm understanding? Are you advocating, Erin, for adding a position? But in this, in the second half of the year, of the fiscal year, or some some later start date in the fiscal year?
Well, I I think. I'm advocating for learning a little more, so the, so that's if we have to add in the position that we didn't budget for. What if we do put it in the position, do we have the possibility of cutting it? Similarly, let's say we do a start date of September and so most of the season is finished. And then we're below expectations, and so what's the process of cutting it? Is it similar that we have to go to the comptroller or is that simpler?
Don't hire. You just don't hire. It's that simple and there's savings in that line.
So this goes back to my thinking of like. If we don't make the money from the revenue, then we don't buy, then we don't hire the person, right? Like we could budget in the person and budget in the revenue that balances the budget for the person. But when we find we're not making the revenue that we need for the person, in that case, maybe we just put it off till next year. For indefinitely.
We've done this in the past with other positions, haven't we? Office staff with the start, a later start date.
We do like Eliza's approach because it's less changes to the budget. That if you over-project revenue a little bit and it doesn't come in. Then so long as the start date is far enough in the future that we would really know how revenue is looking. You know, a July first start date is not, you know, you know. Budgie's gonna advocate for a snow season. So would November be realistic to know what the parking is really doing?
Think we'll have a pretty good idea.
And also remember, we have summer help. So the the need for the additional person in the summer months goes down because we've got another body already. So, I mean.
Plus we've got two new staff numbers right now that are still training, like how many guys can you train at once?
I mean, part of it is just hands, hands on the, on the work that they're doing.
So for illustrative purposes, we can see what a no, what a halfway, a half-year would do, right? November, November would be six months. We could do that and see what that looks like with fifty thousand. You know, but to do that, we would have to come back up to probably that seventy percent number on the revenue side. Knowing that if that seventy percent occupancy rate doesn't happen on street parking, that. This is the first to go.
Well, and and we have to have some confidence that next year we can have a full. Have the person fit in the budget for a full year. By at like fitting in a half a person, right?
We 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 really would tie it to the revenue, right? And this is, this also makes a lot of, shall I say, political sense? Because we're tying the new revenue mostly from visitors into better services from highway for the village each year round. So I I I think, you know, that's that's how we've structured this. So it it feels right to me. The revenue is gonna be ongoing, the expense is gonna be ongoing, so that all fucking matches.
I I I think this approach works because we have, as I said, because we have the additional hands in the summer.
Revenue potentially coming, right?
Well, just just to be clear, you saying that you see this as a seasonal position? Because next summer we'll have part-time help.
Not at all. We already have a seasonal position, so the labor shortage for the roadways and facilities crew. Is reduced already in the summer because of the the help we get, the additional person we bring on in the summer. So being without the additional person he's asked for hurts a little less in the summer because he's got bodies on. So we have an option to get him, we have, we are able to get him through the summer. With another laborer and then in the fall, when we see where we are with revenue, there's potential to bring on another person. But it gives us time, it gives us time to get there. No, I don't see it as seasonal.
Okay, good. Wasn't sure, thank you.
Snow removal, streetlights, sidewalks are all roughly the same, off-street parking, again, twelve percent for the parking lot. Plus seventy-five dollars a month for the kiosk, that's why it went up, even though the budget's use, using last year's numbers. It's because of that seventy-five dollar maintenance fee. Recreation, recreation's budget is contingent on their grant, if they are awarded the grant. They may not spend what they're asking for because they're asking for some of the same things in the grant. The seal coating and the stenciling and some small equipment items to make that court more user-friendly or more accessible to a different group. Would still happen with her without the grant, the grant has beefed up some of their requests, stuff that they would not normally plan for.
The electricity at Dockside, why is it a recreation?
Dockside is a park? Where else would it sit?
I don't know, I mean. Electricity, I would think, I mean, it's used in all over the village.
Each department has an electric one for each building. Except there is street, I mean, village-wide, which is streetlights and the two blinking lights at on ninety. But everything else sits in the department that it serves, Village Hall has one, Highway has one.
And the usage is pretty low, it's mostly Film Society.
Rec did ask for a little bit extra lawn care for some seeding, not significant. Their net change is not high at all. HDRB is asking for the same, zoning board the same.
Can we pause for a moment, please, on HDRB? So with every, periodically, we have a review of HDRB function because we're a certified local government. The ding that we got this year and for several reviews prior is training for the HDRB. We are behind in it and there are two new members, I think they need, they need. And the zoning board also needs a training that it comparable to what the planning board was given under its reconfiguration. I don't see those as non-essentials because. There's, you know, they're making, they're quasi-judicial, they're making decisions that can have legal repercussions, so. And the state has told us that we need to come up to speed, so. I don't know where that lands, Michelle, but.
Wouldn't the HDRB contractual, I mean, there's five hundred dollars for some webinars, sounds like it's something that they need more.
No, no, they've been, the webinars have been available for a very long time, it's, they're not doing it. And, you know, when when we trained the planning board, we had the attorney here and they were, they were required to come in and sit down and go through the training. And I I don't, I I think that's what needs to happen. Is to, we have not, the code call, the code requires all of these standing boards to have training and we're not complying.
In terms of costs, for that planning board training that just happened, not the secret one from a while ago. The last bill, it was fifteen hundred to have them do a training, be accessible for the care to ask questions and then to actually do the session. It was fifteen hundred. And I don't know how many hours it gave them for their requirements.
It required four hours. I don't actually know how many hours they got out there. I probably from last year, I was never asked or told to do any training the entire time I was on the CBA.
It makes for, it's like very weak.
No, but I'm just saying, like, so so fine to do this kind of training, but even just like. Having the end, like, having like more stern guidance to do the webinars that we're budgeting for that they're not doing. Well, we need to develop, if that's the way we wanna go, and I that I understand that it is more the more cost-effective way to do it. We need to come up with a a different carrot and stick, because we are, it is a very weak. Not complying with our code mandated training and being dinged in our local government review. So do do folks feel like you wanna go with a a stronger? Stronger language on webinar.
I mean, it's like, are the boards aware when webinars come up? Like, you know, when.
And the planning and zoning are different, I mean, because those are more readily available and those are. There are so many more state and local regional agencies that provide. Classes, training, one-day conferences that are semi-local. HCRP is a little bit of a different beast in that it's so much more specialized, there's less.
Yeah, I mean, so maybe that's, for for a time, members were attending conferences, which which. Could be counted toward, there hasn't been as much of that. I mean, maybe we consider a different approach with planning zoning than we take with HDRB. Years ago, there was, I think it was when Seth was mayor, the boards were all brought together on a Saturday. For a group training on the basics of running a public meeting. And, you know, complying with open meetings on all of the, all of the base level stuff. That kind of stuff. I mean, what those boards really need is technical training, not just.
Does that count for state training hours?
Does which?
Open meeting law type, you know, those.
But that's not what they need, what they need is, that's right, that's what I'm saying, it's not what, they don't need that. What they need is technical training in their areas of. What they need is technical training in their areas of expertise, of their purported areas of expertise.
So how much would it be to train the HDRB, do you think?
I don't know, I mean, I would imagine that you're right, it's probably, if we're having village attorney do it, it's comparable.
Can the village attorney do it? Like, which, what number are you proposing for them? Um, Sean did say they need more training, and I told him to make a request on what he needs, and I haven't heard back from him.
But he's on, he is on parent leave right now, I'll ask Al to, I'm sure I'm someone that answered. So I don't know a number, I can certainly press Al to put a number forward. I don't know that John is necessarily, that the village attorney is necessarily the best person to do it, but there may be resources through. Um, the Preservation League of New York State, et cetera, just haven't looked into it, but taking note that we need to do it and, and need to look into it.
So this is for HDRB end zoning? Planning, I already put stuff in because I talked to Jesse and Jesse said he's gonna use the attorney for the next six months.
All of the boards need training, needed additional training.
I guess if we up at a thousand for each, that's fifteen hundred for each of HDRB end zoning. And I had a thousand of training in for planning, but do we all give, do we give each board fifteen hundred dollars to work with and then plus the. Attorney for planning.
Right, can you explain that, working with the lawyer for the next six months?
Because we have, everyone on the planning board, literally every member is. And so, um, and there are complex cases in front of them right now, in the same way that. We sometimes have our attorney with us for difficult cases. Jeff, I have asked if John be available to them, so that they're, they have the guidance they need in the room. As they're learning their way, it's an unusual circumstance to have five new members, normally you have a more experienced member in the room.
So it means join the planning board meetings when.
When they're in session, when, when, when the board feels they need those, the support. And frankly, I think, yeah, we need to do that, we owe them that, they've stepped forward into a very difficult role. And we owe them the support that they need at the beginning of their, of their tenure.
Do we need to look at that and go back to the attorney, a hundred and seven thousand dollar budget for attorney expenses?
The planning board, I added it into planning board contractual. Um, three months in this year, three months, so I only did three months, next year, two meetings, two hours a meeting.
So we may be able to find, to identify more affordable options for HDRB, but I think zoning, particularly because. Zoning board is being asked to apply a new code. Um, and they need training in that code in the same way that the planning board does. And I see this as an, an investment to insulate a challenge, right? They know what they're doing and they know the code, they know what their boundaries are, that's the insulation. I mean, it seems like, I can't believe I'm saying this out loud, but it's the truth, it's just, prevention is, is less expensive long term.
Two pages left. Garbage is contractual. Royal has the third year of the contract, it's a three percent increase. It includes the additional services that we've added on through the year, through the.
Sorry, can we pause for a second? Because, oh, you did bring down contractual, I mean, they bring down. Because we're not, we don't have planning, sorry, community day in there anymore.
It's seven fifty? Community day has never been paid for by the village anyway?
Understood, I'm looking at the two thousand amended number, that's where, that's what I was basing it on, but perhaps I'm just reading it.
That's from two years ago, right?
Were they rented all together?
No, because I think.
The swap appreciation came out of that, it just, the bill was paid in February.
Yeah, so I think that it's important that we acknowledge folks who work very hard for the village once a year. I don't know how others feel about that. Asking for feedback on that, you're not asking for feedback on that? Okay, then keep going.
Tree cleaning, storm drains, um, community beautification, um, it's kind of like flags, sometimes flowers. Um, little random things around the village. Um, Bugsy usually uses that, um, tree removal, Jen, maintenance, tree maintenance and tree replacement. Um, ten thousand five hundred, it's what the tree board has asked for in the past two years. They're asking for the same budget and they're asking for this outside of the grant that they've been awarded.
Can you talk to Jen about this today? The way they're envisioning using the grant. At this moment is a particular location. And where they have capacity to, to experiment with sidewalk treatments in the location. And the grant was specifically for sidewalk root conflict. Um, so it's not, I'm sorry.
I, I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry.
Hello, that's okay, what was the question?
Does the grant need to be in the budget?
Does the grant need to be in the budget?
I, it will be, but again, it'll be a net zero, so I need more feedback on, from Jen to know exactly what portion will be. In this year, next year, or possibly two years down the road.
Get into that granular conversation with her, but it is, my point is, it's not being used for. To offset their other, their regular maintenance, they still need to maintain the trees. Um, and last year, that board did not spend as much because. The membership of the board had things going on that took them away from their work. I don't see our, I mean, we're still gonna have trees we have to take care of.
So the last section is benefits, um, state and police department, um, employee and police. Um, I can bring these numbers down, um, like three thousand, five thousand each. Um, we use estimated, the, the state puts out estimated and projected invoices, um. So then I took those and I did real numbers, um, and then did my own estimation, and I did it last year. Um, so I think that these numbers should come down, so that'll be eight thousand savings total. Um, the thirty-two thousand for fireman's service award, Lo Sap is raised by taxes in the other two municipalities. Um, workers' comp, I put in a five percent increase, uh, usually it's a two-year plan. And it doesn't increase as much as liability insurance has in the past.
Um, is that where we had savings last year? Where did we have savings related to? Benef, benefits or payouts?
Health insurance.
Oh, health insurance.
So health insurance is significantly higher in the proposed budget from last year or the current year. Because of the addition of two full-time staff members. Also, in the health insurance budget, um, there are two options, you're allowed to have individual coverage or family coverage. It builds in an incremental difference, assuming that somebody would change from individual to family, they are allowed to change. Um, every November with open enrollment, but they're also allowed to change if there's any life events. Or if somebody that you previously didn't qualify for coverage now qualifies for it. Um, you know, that incremental difference is twenty thousand dollars though, yes, Erin?
So this will end up being one and a half, right, instead of two full-time people because of the start date?
So it'll come down twenty thousand, um, because I budgeted for family plan, which is roughly forty, thirty-eight and change. And then the dental and eyeglasses is just part of the employee book. And so after all of this. You know, so we started at seventy-seven thousand over budget. Um, we're taking eighty-five thousand roughly out of revenue, if we take, if we. Change the highway to half the year, that's fifty thousand, we're still pretty high. In revenue, in expenses over revenues.
And we address all of the, earlier today, you mentioned that you had, you, you, you had particular thinking about. Areas where there could be cuts, so we hit all of the spots that you were thinking of.
So it's police and state retirement, the website, um, increases to the occupancy tax for January. Um, we talked about T-streak, upping fines, um. And the other small thought, um. Is if Highway does get a full-time laborer, the thought might be that some overtime during the week might go down. Um, but at half of the year, it's three thousand, it's not a big number. And we could.
We have little control over that.
Over overtime?
Just morning, yeah, but, and I think with management, possibly. Having another person could reduce, I mean.
But we've done it, just to say, we've hired more people and the number doesn't go down, it's my sense of the situation. But remember that the manager is also in the field, quite ease, he's also working on. By hand, yeah, on projects, so. It will shift some, it can shift some, but I don't know that it's ever gonna shift dramatically.
I'm bringing this up because Bugsy mentioned it, he offered this up as a potential cost saving, that his specific overtime would go down.
Yeah, he doesn't have his, he doesn't have time to do the actual, like, clerical part of managing. Because he's teaching and doing the work right there with his staff, if there was another set of hands doing the work. He could get them set up and then go and do his clerical work while they're working.
What, I'm sorry, what, what do you mean by that?
When Bugsy asked for his addition, an additional staff member, he offered up that. I asked him, do you think overtime will go down if you have another person working with you? And he said, yes, that overtime should go down, not overtime related to storms or rain events. But the day-to-day stuff, he said that most of his specific overtime is managerial overtime. Um, which might be, I know where Laura's coming from, uh, executive session kind of topic with the handbook and all that stuff, that's where I think you're going. But at the end of the day, I don't know what else we can do to close this gap. It's. It's, it's health insurance and it's the parking, um. We should probably pull out a couple of things for fund balance, like the storm drains and the sidewalks, and that'll give us roughly thirty thousand dollars. On pulling out.
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a good call to pull out storm drains, just put them into. But so, do you have a mental number of how far we're off?
I was trying, and there's been a lot of, a lot of changes. Twenty, so.
It's also ten o'clock if you bring them now.
We pulled twenty thousand dollars out in expenses, that I know. Um, and then if we add in pulling out that fifty thousand for laborer. You know, so that's seventy thousand we've pulled out. Um, but it's how much are we pulling out of the parking? If we don't pull out parking and we only pull out, we have to pull out the ten spots. I did do that, um.
I mean, that was the ten spots and.
And.
Seventy percent of fifty percent.
Yes, pulling out ten slots. Thirty thousand. So revenue's going down thirty. Expenses come down seventy, that's only a net forty, so seventy-seven minus forty, we're still at thirty-seven thousand, real back of the napkin. Thirty-seven, pull out thirty-ish for storm drains and sidewalks, we're at seven.
Better.
Let's call it fifteen for a lot of other minor changes, let's call it fifteen right now to work off of a fifteen thousand dollar discrepancy.
That's closer. I, I think we need to see it. This is, I, I think we've gotten closer.
We're gonna find any other items. And that's with the original seventy percent.
With the thought that if that seventy percent doesn't happen.
Yeah. Yeah. Any further budget discussion?
So we're done?
Well, we've sat here through the whole night, I'd love to say we would entertain public comment, but I think everybody's pretty, pretty cooped at this point. Um.
But we had a gentleman pass away, uh, Robert Moran.
Oh, yes.
A Cold Spring firefighter and also a, uh, Cold Spring police officer. And his family's here, I believe he worked for the Phillip Town Highway Garage. Uh, he passed away, uh, the other day, and his service is on the be tomorrow, and I believe the wake is on Friday, uh, the mass is on Friday.
That's right.
I want to recognize him and his family for his service, uh, to the village.
Thank you, Larry, I forgot that, thank you very much.
I, I feel like they sat through hours of this, if they, if there, if, I would be. Open to like a two-minute public comment if either.
I, I was here for information.
We really appreciate that you guys stuck it out.
I was gonna make a comment, just like as a personal resident, like as a resident, not with any other.
Yeah.
Um, uh, what, Rebecca Ramirez, Thirteen Church Street. Um, I love that you increased the two hundred to two fifty blocking driveways. I think that will change a lot of people's lives, and I witnessed it happen on my own street, which is not one that's normally dealing with. You know, I, it does get a lot of traffic because there's parking opportunities on both sides, but I've seen it. It affects at least three people on the street in addition to, you know, the police department. So, um, I think two fifty is.
It's two hundred. It's two hundred.
But I was gonna say, like. I was gonna say, like, increase those violations, I mean, if people are driving their cars. They are increasing our carbon emission creation, so.
We just went, just for context, because it's. Went through a public hearing process and just raised, just raised the violations, so we, I mean, a lot from where they were, so.
Um, but I did want to say one thing, and to take two things into consideration in regards to C-streak. Um, you mentioned here that possibly starting on Labor Day weekend, and I just recall that Labor Day weekend. I don't know, Eulinta, your, um. What your business day was like last year, but Labor Day was our top day. And there were a lot of people in the neighborhood at that time, so it would be an interesting question to bring back to business owners, like how they did on Labor Day. Was it their busiest day? Because if it was, what were the reasons for that as you consider?
Well, Community Day was on Labor Day last year.
So the street was packed. And, uh, considering Saturdays on the summer, I think would be super helpful for businesses. August is hard, a hard month.
It's the slowest loop through the calendar. That's a good one to test.
Yep, thank you. Um, motion to adjourn, so I can, all in favor?
Good night. Thanks for joining us, Erin.